A second please. It's in here. It's in there. There's someone in there. There's someone. In the zoom, there is someone in there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A regular meeting of the board of supervisors is scheduled for Friday, September 10th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. at the community center at 3,500 Bedwood Drive. Please sign off or turn off your cell phones. I just quickly want to add that Chris Shoemaker cannot be here this morning because one of his employees got COVID and he's quarantined. Let me get us signed the contract. And the contract will start until the first. We're going to talk about this more in depth when either Dan or David, when it's their turn to talk. I just wanted to tell anybody who was wanting maybe to meet, he said he would come and he just he can't. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any other questions?
Okay. Second.
Any public comment?
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, the action agenda. First one is a public hearing on resolution number 2021-0827-25, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Safin and Brooklyn District to adopt the golf facility rates for fiscal year.
Move to the floor.
Yeah, good morning, supervisor. So on the cooperation sheet, there's been no changes since the last proposal. I believe it was everything that the board had wanted. It's got the 5% membership increase. It's also got the rate increase for the public rounds with the intention of with dynamic pricing. Basically, we have a ceiling and a floor with the resident rates. So unless you have any questions to answer, there's been no changes since last time.
I don't have any questions on the rate. I just have questions on the sloppiness. On page four, we still have Tanya Kennedy listed as our supervisor, general manager. Microphone. Oh, microphone. Last page of the rates, we still have Tanya as listed as general manager. So whoever approved this, we do a very good job.
Oh, my, it's been corrected. He said it's been corrected.
So the advertisement that actually went in the paper does not have Tanya's name. We called that before it went out to the newspaper. It was like there was just an oversight in the work back there.
And that was my fault.
The newspaper has, yes.
And that was my fault. I use a template to send those legal advertisements out. So just making sure you know it was me.
Any other questions from there?
What are those packages filling out?
As soon as this is approved today, we plan on having one out first thing next week. Ready to go, so.
And do we have any intention of forming the membership while we are taking the increase that we are? Like we had discussed that was for.
Right, that is, that is part of the package, yes.
Do we get to see it before it goes out?
I can actually show it to you, yes, all you know.
I mean, explain to them what we're doing next year and the surplus, several million dollars.
I will afford to do that as soon as.
Yeah, I'd like to see it before it goes out. But if you guys want to see it. Wouldn't be good.
Any other? Any public comment?
Cliff Wood, resident. I was a product manager during period of 1970s. I experienced very rapid rates of inflation. We're only increasing rates 5%. We've already experienced 5% inflation. If you don't anticipate what your costs are going to be for the next year and price our golf such that you maintain the margin that you need to at least not further erode the deficit that we experience from our golf operations. And that's an enormous mistake because next year they're going to end up having to make an even bigger increase. And that's when we start reaching people's choke line. So I would like to encourage you to take a cold eyed look at what you expect our costs to increase in the next 12 months and adjust the pricing of our golf to reflect the kind of margins we have to have on what our costs are going to be at the end of the next 12 months. We kind of did that. If you don't, especially where you discuss, if you don't anticipate what they're going to be looking forward. I understand it's going to equalize. You've already hoped about probably five, five and three in the next three years. Five this year, five next year, three next year, based on what we know at this point in time. We've discussed that a couple of months ago. Are we approving our margin right now? What margin are you referring to? Are we approving our gross margin on our golf operations with these prices?
Yes.
How much?
So if you look at the overall budget, let's just, we'll start with last year. Last year, the overall operating budget was at a loss of $220, $222,000. The budget for this year was at a loss of $180,000. And the budget for next year is a positive $70,000. So we're going to improve the bottom line by over a quarter million dollars in the past two years.
Good. And if inflation is worse than we think it is starting to be, now let's go back to maintenance rates.
Any other public comment?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Public hearing discussed the level of operation and maintenance assessments for fiscal year 2022 and confirming finding of benefit.
Okay, so we have to, before we can officially adopt the rates of assessments, we have to approve the tentative budget. So that will be in the next board meeting. We're required to have public hearings on the assessments as it, based on my understanding as of this hour, what is the, what's the status of the assessments? Are we predicting a raise of 4% or 4% raise based on the numbers that we're looking at now? But that'll all come before the board in the next board meeting. So this is the first public hearing regarding the assessments and the findings of benefits. Findings of benefits might not have changed at all from previous years.
Can you comment?
We'll talk about decisions later.
We can, so just if we're going to take, once again, the public hearing is to notify residents that there is a proposed increase in their assessment rates. It's a 4% across the board increase that's being proposed for a single family dwelling. Current rate is $700 a year. The proposed rate is 728, so it's on a $20 a year. So it's about $20 a month. Overall revenue increase from that increase of 4% is about $130,000 in extra assessment revenue. That does not include new home sales or county lot sales in that number. But that number will be included as well as the official $200,000 of that. So potentially about $300,000 to the bottom line. They have to count it in all lots for the prior to the October, October building.
From my understanding, yes, they can.
We've been told those. So we put it in the budget the first time under the impression that we told that they were going to be able to get it all done. I sent the board an email from Ponton's Home saying that they're still, still forecasting to close by the end of the month. Stay at 300, so that's the hope of it. So we're hoping that still goes through, but we've been also told that there may be some complications that may happen. So we're, we set the budget on the conservative side that they're not going to be able to get it done. Hopefully they do and it'll just be a positive if it does.
That's why the total assessments went down.
Correct. The 200,000, just remove that 200 for the last.
Scott, do you have any update on ability to get that done before October 1st?
I do know that the county is working as quickly as we can. Certainly, we've had some, some absences due to COVID. We're like, we want to get them closed as quickly as we can because we'd like to have revenue. We'd like to get back on the natural. So I know that they're doing everything to close every one of them as soon as I can. I cannot give you a definitive answer right now. Like that is probably more like a facial problem. But they're doing everything they can to get them all closed as quickly as they can. I can't stand to say that they will all be done by October 1st. But it's our goal as well as it would be for you folks to get them closed, get them on the path. Certainly, if it was coming near, we are working on it. But I can have, I can check back around with them today and see if there are any more news and have them call up the staff.
Do we still plan on, or can we still send a memo along with the bills saying this is why we're taking your assessments up? This is the biggest event planned for the board?
The answer to that is yes, I've done one. Some, some of the people thought it was too utilitarian, I guess. So we're going to look at adding more explanation and maybe some pictures of what's going on. More of a newsletter effect thing as opposed to just a letter from me. So assuming that Ariel is able to come back to work soon enough to get this done. Her, her child has been exposed to COVID. So the child is quarantined, which means Ariel's quarantined. So anyway, this is a strange world we live in. But the answer to your question is yes. And if they're able to get it done in a reasonable length of time so that we can send it all out together, it would be a nice piece. Otherwise, I think just a letter from me. I would prefer, I think they had a great idea and we can execute this absolutely.
Do you have a comment by the supervisor? Oh, my God.
Good morning, Bill Nocross, resident. It's hard to say because it's, there's so much pressure on that the residency of propensity inflation was brought up and the increase of golf and possible county taxes and everything else separate. Some serious comments about 500 to 700 dollar increase in county taxes. I, I have asked and hopefully I am, except at night, you're going to have a, a discussion about the gas tax. And the, the thought used to be, years ago, it would become a municipality, heard it versus a district. So therefore, is it a good thing or a bad thing? But I tell you what, to lose local control on your district, I think would be a good idea. I, I think we should have good representation here. But also I should have these representation people really check into this gas tax. We can't get stimulus money. Everything is going south, nothing's coming our way. And I think the residents of Sun and Lake really deserve the county to be involved a little bit more and hope that some relief can be given to the taxpayers here. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
This was just a discussion.
Okay. Okay, resolution number 2021-0827-26, a resolution by the Sun and Lake of Safin and Brooklyn District to approve the job description for the general manager, or district general manager. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any comment?
Compilation of several. I don't know that you can ever put everything on a sheet of paper that you're supposed to do other than, I guess, the one immediately above requirements that said form other duties as assigned by the board of supervisors to the most pertinent. So whatever you guys think I'm supposed to do, that's what I'm proud to do. But it's a, it's pretty inclusive and I think it's, it's as good as lost. There's a lot of stuff that happens around here.
Any other comment by the supervisor?
Over. Yeah, I think, I think it does the job well, much better than the prior version.
Any public comment?
Bill Nocross, resident. This is David Trubaker.
Chris.
Is the, the new resident.
Christian.
Christian Shoemaker. I'm sorry, because I haven't met the gentleman. I don't know who the hell he is. But it would be nice if people that are running for office show up.
Bill.
Or I'm picking on you.
I can't take this. Did you know he was Mike said before?
What?
He's, he's got COVID, he's got COVID.
Well, I thought he, I thought because he was reasonable, because he had business obligation.
No.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood, okay? But what I'm telling you right now, the way we used to have district managers, they would have a district manager, and I remember six of them one time showed up at the old Sun and Lake community center. And they would interview people and that, and people at least get a feeling of this guy would be a perfect fit. Appreciate the job that Dan has done here. But I think that we need a real qualified person to handle the financial situations that we're running into.
Cliff Wood, resident. I'm sorry if I'm judgy regarding what's on that description. But I'd just like to make one point. The fundamental job of a general manager is to make sure that he has the right people in the right jobs and they have defined criteria for the performance of those awardments such that it's easy, it's never easy, but that enables a cold eyed look at whether the people that are in those jobs are doing what they're expected to do. And so my overall question would be, does that job description make abundantly clear that a key responsibility of the general manager is to pick the right people to do the jobs that have to be done?
One of the bullets is direct the selection, supervision and evaluation of district personnel.
Would you read that again, please, with somebody here?
Sure. Direct the selection, supervision and evaluation of district personnel. To do what?
I mean, you can select them. We're talking about.
To do their job descriptions. We haven't, we haven't got their job descriptions in front of them. It would be to evaluate them on doing their job descriptions. Being effective employees. If an ineffective employee, you either get them effective or diverted.
Any other public comment?
Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yeah.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution number 2021-0827-27, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Safin and Brooklyn District to approve the purchase of great furniture for the Island Beach restaurant.
All right, supervisor. So this was part of our capital plan at the beginning of the year. We did delay it slightly. We were just, the last couple of months to put this whole project together. I also want to remind the board that we did use some of the money budgeted for this to purchase some tables and chairs for the outside patio and cover the walls. So with that in mind, and the proposals here for the light and drapes for the banquet room and some new banquet chairs to kind of bring that thing back to life and also kind of upgrade some Asian furniture. This is almost within budget.
I appreciate that you were able to keep it within budget despite the constraints. My question is, do you think it's going to do the job with a lesser budget?
Yeah, absolutely. So with the drapery, that was, that was, there was no reduction there as far as what we were going to do. That project would keep them the same no matter what. I did, originally, I was looking to have probably 180 banquet chairs, which is a pretty big lineup in this. I did reduce it to 150, which I'm very satisfied with. That's a very good number. Did produce a couple of wood tables to get it back online. That doesn't worry me. It's not a huge line ticket item. I think it satisfies our need for right now and in the next year or two of one of the tables. So needs to be replaced. I can use a lot of it. It's, it's not a huge ticket item, so I'm very satisfied, yes.
Well, I'll just make comment on what I told you the other day. This is a particular Sun and Lake operation. We're not thinking ahead, not thinking at all. We're just reacting to the current needs as we usually do. And to find out that costs us a lot of money in the long run. So what I ask is that we have a plan. Like what we want to spend in the restaurant over the next five years. Not that we do it today or tomorrow, but that we know we have to spend $100,000 or $50,000 in case they be to get it up to the level that we think it should be at. We don't have that plan. So I would ask again, that I would like to see a plan of what we intend to do to get that restaurant to the level that it should be maintained at all the time.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to put, put that forward. I don't, I don't think it's a huge miss. And I don't, I know next year we're planning on replacing the divino wall. And I don't foresee, other than.
We talked about China, we talked about flatware, we talked about tables, we talked about chairs, we talked about patio floor chairs.
The, the, the next big project that we'll be discussing it down the road a little bit will probably be the China, which will be a capital expense. A lot of the other things in there, I don't feel will be a capital expense unless we have some sort of equipment need. At this time.
I would like to see, I would like to watch, like to see a plan of like 10 to 12 years for the restaurant for the next five years. I'd like to go.
Sure, I'd be happy to put that together. I don't think it's going to be here to this and I'm happy for that.
I don't know what it is. Do you share in the clue of what you think you might need for either replacement or anything?
Right. Omar and I have discussed, we haven't had an opportunity to put it into effect yet, but they have their, their new system to evaluate their equipment needs and all that cost. And we're going to side on and we're going to do that with, with all the restaurant equipment as well so we can better, you know, forecast the longevity of our equipment, how much needs cost to keep it in service. So we do plan on doing that, yes.
Any other comment? Is there any public comment?
We will put together a five years each plan for the term, shoot it up 90 days to that.
Any other public comment?
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution number 2021-0827-28, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Safin and Brooklyn District to obtain new playground equipment by piggybacking, piggybacking on an agreement between managing company and representative. new playground equipment by piggybacking, piggybacking on an agreement between managing county and representative services. And your motion.
Dan is.
I assume that Ariel, I think she's on the line, from us.
I'm unmuting her. Ariel, if you could unmute your mic, we're ready for you. I'm not a cat. Well, I asked to unmute her, and she has to prove it on her end.
Is she there on this question?
Yeah.
Good question. As we have met with rep services, they have reviewed the location and what we would like to do is be able to use this Manatee County contract, but then come together with the plan and then. In essence, you have to have a playground plan, you see questions in both. You have to have a playground plan, what we're going to do, and then you go to the state with a small FERDA application to get a grant, so this is not, not making a plan, what this is to do is give enough information that we can then apply for the grant. We have a long-term plan, but you, we don't know if it's got days, even in a way, it's got, you have to have basically exactly what we're going to do and then present that to the state in order to get the grant. So, this is the first step toward getting a two hundred thousand dollar application of a grant. That was their plan to do the recreation. Plan, this is the specific of what the um, what the playground itself will look like. So you will use that specific to go to the state and say, we'd like two hundred thousand dollars, please to execute this.
And then you'll bring the specific plan back to us to the state?
Correct.
How much does this cost, or it doesn't?
It doesn't cost us anything. All we're doing is saying, instead of going out for an RFP, we want to use this plan, we want to use this contract with Manatee County to piggyback so that we can then contract with Scott Rosswood, Scott Rosswood is the guy's name.
So is this going to actually blow the plan up? They'll draw the plan based on our recommendation?
Correct.
And then it can act.
Correct.
And that's, that doesn't cost us?
Well, it'll cost you once you get ready to build the plan, build the thing, but we're not paying them. As I understand it, we're not paying them specifically to draw it. We, but we have to say, if we're willing to spend this money to get the plan done, before you can go get the FERDA application. And the urgency here is, you have to have that in time-specific in order to get into grant plan.
So are we still okay with the timing of doing this next summer, or?
Correct.
So we're still okay?
Correct. The time urgency is to get into the grant process. So yes, we will, we'll do it in next summer, but the question is, are we going to use all our money, or are we going to get state grant? That's really the issue, and that's the reason we're trying to think of that, is that a fair assessment, everyone?
Right, so this is basically the selection of your contractor, right? So you're going to pick your contractor, this contractor is going to set the plans, he's going to design the playground, he's going to tell us what equipment you can buy. And this managing contract allows us to get specific percentage discounts on the equipment, installation, uh, you know, shade structures. Uh, we also provide, City of Sebring used the same vendor two years ago when they did the Max Long uh, playground. So Dan Ariel and I met with City of Sebring, they gave them high athletes, straight across the board, straight A recommendations. One of the reasons why we're asking to go with rep services, we can start that design process specific to the playground within the three hundred and fifty thousand, right? So they're coming back and tell us, here's how you can get for three hundred and fifty thousand. We'll then approve that, and we can push that to FERDA before we're safe on the interview.
And, and just to clarify, this contractor is not only going to design a plan and tell us what we can buy, they're going to help us get the equipment, they're going to provide the equipment and install it.
These guys are term D service, so those, they'll be there from start to finish. They oversee equipment purchase, installation. Um, once again, with the master plan, they have all geographic surveys, so they know trade's concerns, um, where the location will be, we, we walk premises with them on site, so they're able, they're term D service.
The, the only question here is, do you use rep services as opposed to going out for an RFP? So.
The RFP would delay the process.
Exactly, but it would push us past the date for a FERDA application, so. And these guys are well recommended, as you said, Sebring, they did Sebring's. Uh, the only reason we can't use Sebring is they didn't actually do a contract, they did. This is what we're doing. So, uh, that, that's all we're asking you to do is use the piggyback contract. At this point in time, we're going to come back to you with a plan before we do anything else.
So we, we just had to also decide on a number, right?
The budget number is three hundred and fifty thousand. Question then is, do you really want to spend your three fifty and nothing else, or do you want to spend your three fifty and whatever gets FERDA? So, it's kind of a, it's a moving target at this point. We would not spend more than three fifty of our money, put it that way, depending on where you go, there's how much shade structure you want to put on it, there's a lot of different. We would come back.
We have to give a number, that's a study call.
Correct.
So we have to decide after that.
No, because they can. The ballpark number is three fifty, that's all we got in the budget.
Correct.
And.
Three fifty, most isn't it?
Well, that's, they could bring it back, a proposal offlane.
Yes, what we, what we bring back to you is, this is what you can get for three fifty, we got two, two hundred from that FERDA or whatever they approved for us. If you want to do, only spend your three fifty, this is how much you can do, if you want to spend another hundred, this is how much you can do. At this point in time, it's all conceptual, so. All we're talking about now is, do we do the piggyback contract?
I have a lot of dream, I can come back and say, we can do everything you want.
Right, I doubt it. Yes, but you have, you have to be further down the road with Art Pack. Before you get into Art Pack, you have to have a plan, you have to say, this is what it's going to cost us. And we want you to pay for the fence or whatever you want to pay for. Art Packs are different, but it's further down the road. Possibly, we could certainly ask.
Any other comment by the supervisor? Any public comment?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yeah.
Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor hoteling?
Yes.
President Gilkin?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda. Agenda is the discussion of restaurant operation and management.
That could be placed on the agenda. Probably been referred to as probably a habitual minor that I'm too critical of restaurant operations. But I wanted to go over my experiences during the last month. I'll start off by saying, last week, or last meeting in the gold game, and put on Tony, Tony show. And at the very end, uh, I think it was Tony suggested that, uh, you know, that just some people are never going to be able to satisfy. Well, I'm telling you right now, if you fill this room up with people that are unsatisfied in operations, that's restaurants. The last month, several Saturdays ago, at lunchtime, it took me fifty minutes to get an appetizer, a chicken case of cheese. And all of these things that I'm going to talk about, the waitstaff is not the issue. And I believe that in the past, I have probably blamed the waitstaff, when in fact, it all relates back to the dish. The following Saturday, I ordered that same chicken case of cheese. And it took me twenty-five minutes to get that, and both of those times were lunch. We then came on a Wednesday night for burger night, and I was fine with this. Service again was good, neon was fantastic. Meals came out, and some of the people said that their meat was not done properly, what underfoot. Last Saturday, resident appreciation night. We had a reservation for five thirty. It had been in for quite some time for twelve people. We got there, we had an excellent waitress in the name of Emily. Who got our drinks quickly. Got our order, entree order in, probably it. We were there at five thirty, probably by twenty to six, maybe quarter to six, yeah, the order was in. Several, or not several, maybe yes, several couples came in, probably a couple four toppers came in. And as we're sitting there waiting for the food to come out, all of us had ordered side salads. Most of these two tops and four tops started receiving their food. At approximately twenty-five after six, trees. Oh, what do they call them, pies? Amber pie, I can't remember the actual name of, no, came to the table. Probably three to four minutes later, the salads came to the table. Three to four minutes later, two entrees come to the table, I believe they were salmon. One with a baked potato that was so brown, it'd been re-eaten several times, that we sent it back. And that one came back to the table as bad, if not worse than the first. Shortly thereafter, not, not shortly, a couple minutes probably, another couple entrees came out from the table. Then they brought out two more entrees several minutes later. One which was uh, cooked steak that I had ordered, with a baked potato, no baked potato showed up. The ending is what really gets you. Eleven entrees were served to the table of twelve. One entree didn't show up, it's all shrimp, bass, or whatever you want to call it. When I asked for, where does it leave? Ron, who had been attempting to make things right, said that the chef said we had a banquet to take care of. And therefore, we weren't receiving the food. We weren't given an option of, well, it's going to take another ten minutes to get it. No, you're just not going to get it. I have discussed this with Mike. I guess, uh, you know, one of the answers could be, you can't go in as soon as. I'm here to tell you that I've been to other establishments. One night, we were set fifty people. They'd ordered guns, they had extra salad. Everyone was served the meal. None of it was inserted good properly. We went to another establishment, the seventy people. And I can go through the same scenario, nobody received the wrong stuff, everybody received their meal, and it was all time. I know I've been critical for the time that I've been on board, and prior to it, about this restaurant. I do not see this restaurant being viable for the long term of Suna Lake with the current management group. And I am going to ask the board to consider going out or an independent group to come in and run this restaurant. I don't see it ever improving because they keep talking about doing things, and it ever comes to fruition. And if you want to talk, remember, our resident appreciation night was Saturday night. And I can tell you that it was dismal. It wasn't busy when I walked in, and it wasn't busy when I walked out. I did talk to some of the people that I knew there, that had been served, and it was good, and they got it in a time of that. We have season starting, and people that are here full-time get tired of hearing that, well, we're getting ready for season. We're the ones sitting here trying to maintain it during the time that the season people aren't here. But I, I don't know how I'm going to be able to go in and enjoy a meal when this thing all starts October first, when we have, one of the whole great things about Suna Lake is a fellowship and camaraderie of going in after golf and sitting down for an evening meal. But how do I do that? How can I? If I was having this experience someplace else, you think I'd be going there? I'm telling you, I think it's time. Maybe it'll be worse, but I know what we have right now, and I find it totally, totally unacceptable. That's all I've got for now.
Any other comments by the supervisor?
I, I would add that I have also had problems, but I've seen improvement. Um, it's not there yet, there are always going to be some challenges in restaurants, but certainly it's very high that supervisor Eric would be continuing to have bad experiences at the restaurants, at the restaurant, when he's not only a supervisor, but apparently a regular restaurant. And you think you would be doing everything that you could to take care of. Um, the, the other concern that I learned about after we had our, our one-on-one meeting was, I was, I was kind of surprised that on a residence night, the general manager wasn't there on duty looking after the residents as well, because that would be the opportunity to, to really try to create some relationships with the residents to have them come back more often. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that that was a good decision. And had you been there, maybe the problem would have been my wife.
Well, I'll just say that I'm disappointed that their manager was here two weeks ago, and nothing was said. And obviously, the problems have gone on. Wasn't this, this pass out here, so we missed an opportunity to talk with their management. I don't know, why the heck we're here then if we don't, I don't know how we feel. But that's what I said, I did tell him how I felt, and he said, I was a minority. And we'd already been here for five and a half hours, and I could feel like sitting here, this is not the end anymore. That was your frustration, I thought. So.
Correct. My, my recommendation would be, and although I don't think you'll take us up on it, is we never sat down with, who's the guy from the restaurants in the corporate thing, the guy that comes?
Tom Bandworth.
Uh, Tom Bandworth? Anyway, he's your regional guy, or whatever he is, I would suggest that we invite him down here. Have a get-together with Craig, and him, and Mike, and see if they can figure out what we need to do to fix it, since, you know, the big problem seems to be with Craig. If you guys don't want to do that, then we can just take a straight-up vote and see what you want to do.
I did, I had experienced what I experienced Saturday night last, at the last meeting. I did, I had experienced what I experienced Saturday night last week, at the last meeting. That's what broke my heart.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, maybe you should sit down and talk to these guys, unless, I mean, we didn't tell them, is this guy Tom, don't act like you're one, or what we're talking about? Anybody tell me yet?
Tom is aware of this.
When did he find out?
Monday.
Well, that's not being aware of the situation, that's being aware of the facts.
Well, it, it, the incident occurred on a Saturday night, so I informed him first thing Monday morning.
Right, but then. The only way to fix a problem is to address it. If you wanted to try and address it, I think that'd be the way to go, if you go.
Well, I think we have several issues there, I mean.
And we haven't told them yet, that's my whole point, we got it, they were here two weeks ago. I mean, I don't care either way, I'm just saying, if their management comes down there, and we even said, well, I said two weeks ago. We have to take a vote on them, and everybody said, oh no, everything's fine, oh, I did not. Uh, we didn't take the vote, but the majority of people said no vote is necessary.
Okay, majority is against.
You missed the vote.
There was not a vote at the time.
I'm not saying that, like you're saying, it's not true, I'm saying, we had the opportunity to talk to their managers.
I'll be happy to have him come in here, and I'll walk through it again. He knows exactly what happened, and there's no corrective action that I see that has changed anything.
Have you talked to him?
I've talked to Mike.
Have you talked to the guy who's the other guy?
No.
Maybe you should, I don't know.
Maybe I should?
My understanding is there has been corrective action planned, put together to make sure that it didn't happen like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and I can give you my company events, if you'd like.
That doesn't solve the problem, the fact that you did corrective action is a good thing. But to his point, that doesn't necessarily solve the problem, that solved the issue of that night. The problem is, to Craig's point. Is how do we prevent this from happening again? It has to be checked, if there's no changes made to the way you run the operation, then I assume this will happen again potentially.
That is correct, and that's part of the corrective actions, action plan. Uh, is to change how we operate, mostly on the oversight side, so to make sure that. Our managers are overseeing, not only just the service at the time of the service, but also the preparation ahead of time, and then, then actually the closing procedures afterwards.
I mean, I listened to what he said, I got confused, he said it's not the servers, but the servers are bringing out different meals at different times.
That's the kitchen bringing the boat.
Well, the kitchen brings it out, and the service brings it out.
Kitchen brings it up.
Kitchen brings out food.
I mean, you can look at it either way you want to, it's, it's the service staff, it's all together.
No, what I'm saying is, isn't, isn't there a place in the kitchen, the store, where all these meals, and they're all ready, and then you bring them all out, back to the restaurant?
Absolutely. This, this, in this situation, it was kind of a breakdown of, of going from the house and back to the house at the same time. Uh, it was kind of a slow motion effect of how we got to where we were. And, and we sat down, first thing Monday morning, I sat down with my staff, because of the incident, and, uh, you know. We wrote, oh, that's, what we wrote on the paper, the care was exactly what Mr. Eric has, has stated. And then we followed up with, how we would correct that. Um, and the oversight that we need, and communication that we need, and the teamwork that we need, to make sure that these incidents.
So what is the policy?
If there's six people having dinner, and they have six entrees, are we trying to bring them all out at the same time?
Absolutely, not only is it good for the, not only is it good service for the, for the six top and sitting there, but it also saves from confusion of the background. Pulling three trays out of the middle, and that taking those to the table, and you, now, now you gotta make sure that, which three left, and which three we have left to go, so. It, it makes, it makes it efficient on both sides, and obviously, the, the person sitting at the table is one we're worried about, but, uh.
I'm confused on one issue, who's bringing the food out?
We have expeditors, that, that typically bring ours to the balcony, it's easier.
Controlled, right?
Controlled by the front of the house, so.
Oh, by one of the house?
It is controlled by the front of the house, the expediter is a front of the house employee, they are, they are on the floor. So they actually, when the ticket comes out the window, they. You know, has all the list of entrees and salads and sides, so they're the ones that, you know, if you have soup, they're the ones that are playing with the soup, they're the ones that are giving. You know, the salads or the baked potatoes, and then entrees will come out with, you know, the fries for the, and, and they read the ticket, they pull the items down, and they tray them up. And when they fulfill the ticket, they run the order, and then they come back and repeat. Now, in a sense.
They work in the kitchen.
Well, they, they're, they work both, so that's why it's a breakdown of both front of the house and back of the house, because the oversight needs to be from both managers, not just one. So that's, that, that's where the big key breakdown is, is, is that, that all of the above, uh, and it's. Obviously, this is not a nineteen situation, nor is it a situation that happens often at all. But, um, it, it unfortunately did happen, and we just need to make sure that this does not happen on full, and that's why we did a full report on it.
I, I'm concerned about the last statement you created me. Who in the kitchen? The chef? Said that he was not coming, so, and he was the chef, or whoever it was, needs to apologize.
No, I.
That, you're not true.
No, I, no.
Being, being like that, whether it's the restaurant. Any luck, I'm sorry.
In, in our end of the report, we were told that the meal was no longer wanted, so that, we were, we did not, we did not inform, but. To my knowledge, from my side of the table, we did not inform somebody they were not gonna get a meal, uh, there is no, there is no. There is no reason why anybody on the staff would say, sorry, you're just not getting a meal today, I don't. That, that would be, that would be the worst thing I've, I've seen, right, yes.
Exactly. And to say, especially because a banquet's going on, so we need to decide, are we gonna have banquet, so we're gonna have this?
Right, well, we also, Wednesday night, we had a banquet of fifty or sixty people, we served two hundred cars on the floor, or, not two hundred, but we served a hundred and fifty cars on the floor, without incident. Like I said, this is an isolated incident, unfortunately, this is, I'm sorry it happened to you. Uh, we don't have, we don't have, these incidents don't occur on the. Uh, since January first, we've served thirty-five thousand meals at my restaurant. And, and I have not had anything near this occur in that restaurant. And, and again, it's not excusable, I, 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 I'm embarrassed by it just as much as anybody else. Um, but this, this one incident does not define who we are, um, and we're definitely gonna correct it, uh, that I can assure you. Because this, these things just can't happen, it, it, it didn't happen because it was a banquet, it didn't happen because of, of anything, it was just a, a breakdown.
What happened, songs?
Yeah, absolutely, it broke down, it broke down from, from one individual. Um, who probably didn't have the oversight or the help that he needed at the time, he was overwhelmed, and, and he.
But the four.
And, and the folks, the folks that were. That should be helping him out, did not.
And the four of us and the two tops, definitely.
Right, so, and, and I, and I, and, and what, like I said, it was a breakdown at one table, the rest of the night was without incident, it was, this was an isolated incident on that night as well. And again, it's inexcusable, and it shouldn't happen. Uh, it was just a total breakdown of our, of our whole crew, really, to be honest with you, and servers included. Anything else, Barry?
The only thing I'll say is, uh. For the last two years, I think we've been going through this, and, uh. We've had, we're telling. I don't worry once the meeting ends. Uh, or, that's an option, uh, but. I made several recommendations, that I thought, of course, I'm not in the restaurant business, I'm sitting here as a supervisor with one alternative. To either keep you working, or find somebody else, that's, that's my job, my job is not to run the restaurant. And I made several. Statements and thoughts that I wasn't happy with. And it's two years ago. And so I. You know, I. What I'll do is, you know, I'll, I'll take a vote, whether or not, but I'm not gonna do what we did last time. And bring in other companies, and then keep you here, and end up with you. And go through this whole grid of a wall again, now, if you wanna help it down. Vote on, we do replace you, or we don't, I'm in favor of it, but. My history, and it's been almost seven years now. That helps in changes, we try harder, faces, a few faces have changed. But when I talk to Tony, there has not been one change. That I had recommended to do it. And, you know, until apparently. He thinks better, and that's, and that's it, he's the, he's the way to turn. So, all I'm saying is, I'm not interested in voting if we're gonna talk. But if we're interested in saying, you wanna keep, keep you guys for, or replace you. On a certain date, I'll vote back. I just wanna straighten up, and I'm telling you, I've never seen. We're a pretty nice group here. Uh, we've got five supervisors that are pretty lenient, as far as I know, so.
My position really was not. To take away the management of the board.
Well, yeah, but if you do that, Craig, if you do, if you take away the, it practically, uh, goes away with the law, but, you know, we, we can, we can find somebody just through the restaurant.
I mean, we can.
You know, uh, but.
That's where my, that's my position.
Right, okay, but that's, all I'm saying is, you know, I'm just not interested in, unless, the majority of us come up with an idea, and, and we get something resolved. I mean, I don't wanna be here the next two years that I have left, and the same problem. I mean, I don't, I mean.
I, I mean, when you talk, when you said changes, that you're talking. Personnel changes?
Yes, personnel changes.
Okay.
That's what I was talking about.
And no personnel changes, I'm the mover of, I'm not the personnel changer.
I didn't know, did you correct me?
But I, if, if I had known enough to, about the restaurant business, would be. The only thing I can do is look and see how it's working, and, and the reaction I get from our residents. And, and we certainly have been, we certainly have been very good at. Giving them an opportunity. But again, I, we can, we get still capable, but, uh. The restaurant part, that's what it is, I mean, I don't even know what it's about. It's just not working, and our, our job, I can remind you all again, is to make sure that we get somebody in here, it's not. I have, have no idea of another restaurant, I don't wanna know. But I, I have a firm belief that I wanna find somebody that can make these problems go away, and so. I'll listen to the rest of you, but. I just don't wanna go down this path that we did the last two years.
Right, if I do say so, you know, obviously, you know, in the restaurant business, you know, mistakes do happen, no restaurant's ever gonna be perfect. Um, you know, the best quarterbacks in the world fumble on throw-in interceptions, and, and they're Super Bowl winners. In, in this role, like I said, we've served thirty-five thousand meals at this restaurant, the neighbors, and, and I would say. Out of those thirty-five thousand meals that we served, uh, obviously, there's gonna be some that are unhappy. If we serve those meals at ninety-nine percent satisfactory, we still. Miss three hundred and fifty people. If we were ninety-nine point one nine, there's still thirty-five unhappy people. Now, if you go read our reviews online, and compare them to everybody else in town, the best operators in town, are, we stand up right with everybody else. Uh, I have a stat here from two weeks, the last two weeks of, of these that were filmed out. All of one of these recommended that they would dine with us, or recommend us to somebody else. The only one that didn't gave us a five-star rating, and I think they checked the wrong box. Okay, when I first took over the restaurant. A year and a half ago, we were rated close to thirtieth on, on TripAdvisor. Through our corrective actions and planning and better hiring and improving our staff, we have moved that out to number eleven. Which puts us ahead of a lot of your favorite restaurants in town, like.
It only takes one to screw up a hundred or a thousand things. So stop trying to defend something you can't defend, it was a screw-up.
Absolutely, we, and we ought to screw up, I, I hundred percent ought to. I, I do not.
Now, here's the eliminated screw-ups.
Absolutely.
That's what we can, that's what the whole.
That's, that's, that's what I was getting to.
None of us care about five hundred thousand parts that say you're a wonderful guy in restaurants, wonderful place to eat. I don't really care about that. I care about the one screw-up.
Right, that's what I agree. Absolutely, well, I, I do too, believing I do, and, and, and. Obviously, if we're making a lot of screw-ups, our revenue numbers won't be increasing, uh, you know, through this time, uh, well. I don't know if you wanna hear me speak out of that, but our revenue numbers are kind of the best they've ever been in the past fifteen years. Uh, so, unfortunately, again, I apologize to Mr. Eric, and his, and his own table, uh, but, but. I never wanna see that happen, I never wanna see that happen again. Uh, but, but I just wanna let the board know that that does not define who we are, if, if we were messing up like that all the time, we wouldn't have any customers. Uh, so it is very important, very important, that we correct this immediately, and that's what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, I was at the table that Craig was speaking of Saturday night. And, um, I just want all of you to know. I understand that Craig may have made lots of complaints before, but he's made them. Probably for the rest of us who haven't had the, um, guts perhaps to come up and speak. I just want to say that, yeah, I know you understand that it was a screw-up, and it's just perhaps one at a time, so. My husband ordered soup, salad, and dinner. He got salad, dinner, and soup, in that order. Don't forget, and you heard Craig mention some other things. I don't know how they can mess up so many baked potatoes, a baked potato is not that difficult to fit. Um. What bothered me, among other things, member appreciation night, the place should have been filled, or had filled, or more filled than it was. And the other thing, and now you said, Mike, that Wednesday night, you had a big something, and all the people you served, however, uh. With a big party in the dining room, which I know the club needs for the revenue. Perhaps member appreciation night should not have been at the same time, I would appreciate it. I would like to have been appreciated as a member. And really appreciate it, now, I understand that perhaps our table was the only one that was. Well, just so, it, it was just so bad, you can't describe it, I know Craig is trying, but I wanted to come up and let you know that. He, he was not just complaining about Saturday night, because it happened, and it happened to all of us, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna say that I.
Who are you?
Oh, I'm Cecile.
Oh, okay.
And I'm a resident, and I encourage a lot of people to eat at the restaurant, and recently, I would not agree with Mike. I, something so simple, is we went in to have, we have lunch, there's about five or six ways after golf, at noon, to go in and have lunch. Well, we resorted to only having hot dogs, because that's about all they can get within forty-five minutes, so. The last time we had hot dogs here, we sent them back three times to the club. And if somebody can't work a hot dog after three times, maybe they won't deserve us staying for lunch, and I haven't been back since. And this is very disheartening to me, because I love the club. And I have encouraged many, many people to eat there, and when I started my golf group, it's part of having the golf room, you had to eat dinner with them. And if you didn't eat dinner after a while, I didn't put you on the golf list, but now, I kind of encourage people to eat other places. And if, and I am very discouraged that Mike hasn't heard from more of my people on how they've been treated at the club in the last year. And I don't agree that you've only had one complaint, I'll make sure that you receive many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, anybody else?
I'm curious, do you know about the hot dogs?
No.
Huh? No? Cliff Wood, uh, resident. I like my remarks to be constructive. Lots of things to criticize, but we spent, what was it, about seven hundred thousand dollars on a kitchen with the fundamental objective of being able to serve banquets and have a separate line that serve, uh, people in the bar, uh, in a efficient way. I don't know whether it's a, uh, the inability to hire enough people or everybody you know, everybody's having staffing problems. There's the wonderful foresight of our government to make it, uh, more profitable, stay at home than go to work. But uh, I'd like to go back to a couple of years ago. Uh, the color group and the wood group, which in total was probably a hundred and fifty people uh, would, uh, would have their shotguns thirty minutes apart. And so essentially, you know, within an hour's time, you have hundreds and fifty, uh, people coming into the restaurant. All placing their orders at the same time. And I don't care what restaurant you go to, no restaurant is gonna be able to handle a hundred and fifty orders in an hour's time and, and make it work. Uh, Cecile pouted and pouted and pouted to get a buffet line set up for the Saturday. I don't know why there was such great reluctance to do that, but finally, when the kitchen was directed, it had to be directed to set up a buffet line. When they finally did it, they did a good job. And, and people came in and there were, uh, uh, nice selections of entrees. Uh, they were, uh, appeared well, tasted well, were, were hot like they should be. That really worked great. And if you decided not to go through the buffet line and order off the menu, you just had to be prepared to wait, especially if there was a banquet. Now, if we have this problem with the banquet and, and being able to run that separate line because of staffing issues, uh, why couldn't we do a, a buffet in the bar when we have a banquet over there? Where it would be a lot easier to get, uh, food out that people can get rapidly and can be expected to be reasonably good. Another idea would be to, uh, offer the same entree to people in the bar that you're serving in the banquet. So if you, uh, don't have a problem having to try to run a, a, uh, a, a separate line to prepare all the various dishes. I mean, that would be just two ideas. And I, and I come back to this issue of picking people. Uh, uh, people shouldn't have to be directed to do things to solve problems. You need to have people that are thinking ahead and anticipating problems and, and, and compensating what, uh, is taking place such that you don't have a Chinese flare. That's all I'd have to say about that. Uh, while I'm here, I would like to make one observation about the job description of the general manager. I made the point, it was my belief, that probably the most important job of a general manager is to, uh, is to make sure that they have the right people in the right jobs. In other words, where you have picked the people and, uh, you get, and, and you get them in those jobs and then you monitor their performance on the basis of outcomes, not tasks, outcomes. And when I look at this job description, where do we find the issue of direct selection supervision and evaluation distribution? This is the fourth item from the bottom. So I will rest my case. If you guys don't understand that the fundamental job of the general manager is to pick the people and make sure that he has the right people doing the right tasks. And that the whole process is outcome-based, not business-based.
Thank you, Cliff. Anybody else?
I'm Martin George Puffenberg, resident. I've been here twenty-seven years and I've been arguing for a restaurant for twenty-seven years. They're amazingly similar. Uh, none of the boards, previous boards that worked hard to accommodate the complaints. But I think Michael made a well, a number that surprised me was, how many meals? Thirty-five thousand? And if you could, what would the percentage of breakdown be? Residents versus outside meals?
I couldn't give you very specific numbers. Probably fairly close to fifty-fifty or slightly more on the, uh, non-member, uh, non-member meals.
Fifty-fifty, well, that's a surprise. The, uh, I must be getting feverish in my old age. I actually agree with Cliff Woodson everything you said this morning. So I think one of the most important things that he said was his last statement. The general manager's job in this district is to assure that you have the right people in the right positions. And you have the right people and they do their job as outlined. The general manager's job that comes up much easier. He can go away and the board would have confidence knowing the district is gonna continue the high level of performance with like. The other, only other issue I have is, I don't know whether it'd be for Mike's group or the board. I don't know whether it'd be worth spending a couple of dollars if not. They get an outside restaurant consultant. He has no allegiance to Mike's company, none of the board. Usually they'll come in for a couple of weeks, you have the time it takes to make their presentations or find them to the back of the board. You may be surprised what the season restaurateur would tell you. Uh, maybe everything we're doing is the opposite of what they were writing. I don't know that, but I don't think about restaurants or eating and being built. But it's certainly worth, worth a few dollars. The dollars we spent to upgrade the restaurant, dollars didn't do us much. The, uh, I might be wrong, but I don't recall in twenty-seven years the restaurant making any money. So if it was a supervisor, Phillips, restaurant, Eric, Brooks, or other two gentlemen, you wouldn't stand operational at all. And after many years, probably fifteen years when I was here, we decided as a board the downsides of the members' own, that we didn't get much accretion to the outside business. We thought anybody could manage our losses better. Well, that didn't prove to be a success either, so. You've got a uphill battle in front of you. Try to make it profitable. You never will, in my opinion. Breaking even would be the best, whatever the because it's primarily a service to the client. That's what it's for. Outside entities. We can't compete with large corporations. They have millions back. We've got thirty-five hundred members paying seven hundred dollars a year. That's a, that's a, uh, revenue. That's all the revenue. That's my thoughts, uh. I just think it's a very difficult road to climb. It's all this. Any restaurant in the world, you're gonna have pickups. And they're more obvious and small operational like ours. But, uh, you know, hopefully it'll continue and strive to have a meaningful, thank you.
Thank you, man. Next.
Next. Hello, I'm Chris, resident. Uh, earlier you guys, uh, passed a resolution for furniture and drinks, uh, things like that for the restaurant, which is great. Uh, my question was that, uh, I rudely dropped that out. Was the, uh, uh, was, was that included money for painting and new lighting in the, uh, in the, uh, what do you wanna call it? Exclusive room? The other room? Does that include lighting and painting and?
The, no, painting of that room is, is, is not in this capital budget here and it's not operating budget that we operate out of every day and we have been taking care of it. If you wanted to put new lighting fixtures in there, that would be a capital project. I'm using that at this time, but if a light bulb goes out, it seems to be ongoing out right now, so we'll replace them all the time. That's operating.
Well, I, I thought it would try to be a proper, uh, uh, order of painting and what, and doing it with lights before you hung up the drapes or the furniture. I think that, that would be the normal order of painting and getting it cleaned up. So I hope you can get some money to to, uh, do that paint job.
Just to clarify.
What other?
Just a minute. To clarify, there is some lighting in the courses that will have something to do with the ambiance of the room.
Good, good, good. That would be greatly appreciated. I think to upgrade it a little bit, organize it. One other problem here, which we really shouldn't be discussing publicly, but, uh, I'll try to skirt the issue. Uh, recently, we, uh, had a termination of a bartender. Which is a real black guy. And I'm sorry this is particularly individual. But he was very good. He helped everybody. The servants were fine. And I'll drop it there, but I think that, uh, the other instances that have happened where people are dismissed for reasons, the bar help should be really background checks to make sure that this individual, who's handling a lot of money, is, uh, on the up and up. I'll drop it that way. I just hope that future employees, uh, check.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. Next.
Brian Rose, you know, golf. I apologize to Mr. Eric, Mr. Eric, for what happened the other night. Obviously, mistakes happen. Doesn't mean they're ever acceptable. We want to learn from them and move forward. And I agree with this, Phil. If that was said at the table, then we definitely do, we can make some corrective action. I, I have not heard that and we will investigate that further. Be more than happy to set up a meeting with, uh, our national food development director, Mr. Eric. I will say that we take something like very seriously. And we listen to the board and the members. We adopted, you know, we, we give out our recommendations. We've adopted our menus to things that we've said, lower-priced items, things that we like in other facilities. And we don't really wanna throw the baby out. That's why, as Mike said, we're gaining momentum. We had our best third quarter ever with very little banquet. I know nationally they would say, oh, all the banquet business came back and you had a great third quarter. We didn't have that. It was all off. We had our best July. We're looking at our best August. People vote with their wallets. But yes, we want to eliminate all the bad stories and they've traveled faster than every good story. And we certainly wanna take it very seriously and investigate it and set up plans. I mean, as Mike said earlier, best quarterbacks, best NFL teams, they make mistakes. You evaluate, you figure out why you're getting, you address it, you train it, and we move forward. And I, you know, we had a conversation Monday before eight AM. And we had Tom looped in by nine. So it is very important to us. I'm, all I can say is I apologize for that. I'm sure that it was very embarrassing and I wouldn't want that to happen again. At any point in time, you know, I'm not gonna stand up here and make excuses. I know that we had some issue back in the kitchen. But we're gonna address them and move forward. And yes, I mean, there was other things that, there was some courses made that night. But, you know, we, we now know that we're going forward and we have open discussions.
I would like to just say that you reevaluate all of your employees in the back of the fridge. Because with all these complaints coming out, somebody is making mistakes and that needs to be addressed. And the only way you can address that is by changing, making changes in your staff and in the kitchen, in the back of the kitchen.
Absolutely. Yeah, and when you bring Tom, it's a little different. While I know it, he's an expert there. And I'd rather have an expert come in and tell us, you know, where we're, have the potential to.
I'm I, this is fine and giving you more time is fine, but if you don't see the change before season or shortly thereafter, then I like Mr. Puffenberg's, uh, idea of bringing out an outside consultant to know the law between either this side or that side.
I understand.
Okay.
Is it the nearest commission that you guys had? I wouldn't be able to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think we.
Listen, I, thanks.
Brian, I think we, yeah, I wanted to say something about that.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
No, that's okay, Brian. Your show. I'm petulant resident. Uh, I heard the word just now that I think is very important, training. Uh, it's happened to me a couple of times in the restaurant. I need to don't complain. But, uh, my soup and salad should come out first, not the after. And I think, uh, training is very, very important. There's, they should do, uh, places should be of other licenses for a few days to, to learn the rules and the approaches and the cons. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Brian.
No, I was just gonna say, Beverly, I thought had a great idea. I think we should pursue what cost of that would be.
Some same destroying kitchen.
What's her name? Indigo, we even know about her if we decide to do it.
Okay.
And I think it's a wonderful idea. But we don't tell them what we're.
Okay, Craig, you're the one, I guess, that has to tell us what you want done or what you're recommending us to do.
Well. I guess I've, I've seen him some improvement, but I if you keep doing things the same way as you've done before and expect some improvement, you're never going to get there. And that's, in my opinion, what is going on at the restaurant. We continue to complain about, or at least I do. I, I do you frequent it at all?
Yeah, I, I, I go there, but to tell you the truth, Saturday night, we went out with a couple. They wanted to come up here. And I, I called them back. I said, I don't wanna come. I mean, I just and, and that's it. I mean, I used to love to go up to the, I would be on Friday nights and when we first woke here. But.
For us having a, a resident appreciation night, twenty-five percent off. And we can't get residents to come. We've got a serious issue here.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, they're part of the problem. And I've heard that more than once. Well, I didn't know that it was twenty-five percent off that. Maybe I come.
Well, Craig, I, I think most of the supervisors here agree with you. It's just we have a different way of getting to this eventual end.
I'm not asking for a vote right now as to going out to look for an outside room. But I think we ought to be thinking about that because
Okay.
I don't see. I don't see
Can I ask you to, if I'm sure Indigo will wanna do this, but when they come and meet, would you uh would you represent the board? Talking with them?
I'm not sure that I represent.
Hey, we're all looking to make it better.
Yeah, we wanna make it better. It's it's just we have we have different opinions on how to do it. Uh, I I would like you to do that and just keep us informed. And because we have to, we we can't just keep forgiven and forgiven and forgiven. One of these days.
I'd be more happy to sit down with Indigo.
I'd like to do the, like, do that.
Before, I will continue to sit down with them. I had, after this incident, I sat down with them. I offered suggestions. But it's not up to me to run the restaurant.
That's right. And and Ryan and Mike, I would recommend that you guys speak with Craig and listen to him, and there's some changes that has to be made. And I'm not gonna tell you where my train at. But we can't keep doing what we're doing.
And the two cents I would like to add, I've heard some football analogies. I grew up with baseball. An analogy that I shared with Mike was that when the pitcher is under control, every pitcher's gonna throw some balls and strikes. You wanna have more strikes and balls. Pitchers pitching under control, the umpire's gonna give him corners. When the pitcher is missing a lot, he's not gonna get the corners. And uh that's what we need to do is we need to have more control, um fewer balls, more strikes, we wanna get the outs and and win the game. Um, the the other thing I would say is if you go back to the general manager's job description, one of the things on the general manager's job description is to coordinate management of the Indigo relationship. And the suggestion that we hire somebody but not let Indigo even know we're doing it, we can't do that at the board level because what we do at the board level has to be public meeting. The general manager is, needs to manage that relationship, needs to make sure that the restaurant is running properly. It's not their job to run the restaurant, but the general manager should be dealing with these complaints. We shouldn't have to be dealing with them at the board level. When it happens to a board member, we're gonna deal with it. Uh, but ideally, that all gets worked out by the general manager and Indigo uh so that the complaints are taken care of quickly and not having to be addressed by the board. You know, when you look at the amount of revenue and expense that the restaurant contributes to the bottom line of what we should be looking at, which is really infrastructure and long-term planning, we spend a lot more time on the restaurant than we need to be spending. And I'd like to see more of that done uh by the general manager so we don't have to deal with it here at the board.
Thank you, Neil, man.
And I did go to the general manager first. Registered the complaint. I went and talked to Mike and he called and asked you to come in.
And I've talked to Indigo multiple occasions this week.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. So we just, Craig, feel free to bring it up anytime you want, once you've met with him. We see if we can get this better. Okay. Moving on. And on my end. Petitions.
Done.
Staff reports.
We've been working that out. Quite a few projects, uh, Ponce, Terega, uh, Terega's almost done. We're just waiting for side. Uh, Ponce is done. Um, the COVID has brought Ponce. Uh, we're out back on um uh putting some COVIDs out back, doing some drainage work back there. But I just wanna let you know that our contractor right now, our main contractor, his wife and him are very, very sick. I don't know what they have because I I know the wife um um is in the hospital, and I know he's very sick. So so the communication with them uh in the last week and a half has been kind of tough for us. Um, they are still working on the projects, but I just haven't talked to them. So I just wanna let you know, uh, and it and it's been tough getting getting some materials. Um, Pebble Beach, they're over there today working, um, and it's the same contractor. Um, you know, so we are a little behind, but we are getting a lot done. You know, we've done some work on the golf course and and at the clubhouse. I've been helping Mike out. You know, between Mike and I, we've been working together on those projects. So, um, and we've done quite a bit here at the community center. Um, so, um, everything is going pretty, pretty good on projects. If you guys have any questions on on uh where we are within anything.
Yes, Pebble Beach is gonna work.
Well, we have an engineer that designed it. So let's hope it works.
I mean, hasn't, I mean, does it look like it's gonna hit?
I think it's gonna work. Um, I do like what he came up with. We're going with sock pipe. We're doing a lot more area than we thought. Um you know, we've had a lot of discussion with it, about it, uh, Dan and I and um uh uh Drew. And we also will be making some cut throughs on Pebble Beach to the the next run over for drainage. And and I would be upset here for for the last twenty-five years, we haven't done some of those areas back there that we should have done. But as we were here, there's nobody living in, nobody living in, now it's people building. So we are, we are starting to address a lot of those. Uh, we also put the new generator um uh down in, down on number four. That was installed, I think, Tuesday. Um, um, you know, so we are moving on with improving. I like Neil, what Neil said, you know, we spend more time talking about things. I mean, we've been an hour on a restaurant, but I like to talk about more user structure here that we have to fix. And we have to fix this stuff. So Neil, I wanna thank you for bringing that up.
Mike, this uh this just shows you that with with the sale of, and I'm going over that list now, from Cortez East is gonna be also.
Exactly.
And it's so important that we talked about that drainage that hands working on all that's gonna have to be done, that major project that we're thinking about, that that whole area hasn't been touched in one
One, a long time.
So it's just, I just want to, for the residents to know that.
Right, exactly. And like you and I have taken a ride over there. And I think, and whoever else, Benny was, we are moving along with that. Um, the watch orders, um the watch orders, we still have quite a few watch orders. Um, we also, um, on on code enforcement, we received another fine yesterday, um, um that the ruling that we changed where where uh they're fined right away, it's not continued. You know, you can park it for two days if you move it well. That's been changed. And so we actually received two or three fines that people are coming in paying their fines. So I mean, at least we're waking people up when that stuff's through.
Very good. In regards to that code enforcement, where are we at on the Granada house?
The, yeah, the one that is under construction for five years. I've got information on that. I'll address that later.
Yes, he can address that.
I gotta push it on, it's the infrastructure.
Yeah.
What is the major thing we're doing on Cortez? I'm scared.
There's lots on Cortez. That when developer, Prominence Home bought this, three hundred. I I I'm only halfway through the west, but they've got, they're gonna own thirty, forty lots just on Cortez.
Basically, everything in unit sixteen, I guess it is.
Yeah. And there's a couple streets out there, Coconut Road, they bought on the street, you know, so it's, it it just stuff that drainage is gonna be a big thing for when they start developing.
They're they're telling us there'll be, what, three hundred homes and eighteen?
And eighteen months.
I do have a question on, I think it's Ponce.
Yes.
When you get down in the circle, that one street on the right, that every time it rains, it's flooded.
Uh, uh, somebody just bought that house right there.
Yeah.
Right down.
That whole area, four five houses.
Right.
It's like twenty feet of water every time it rains.
Well, that I, um, that's drainage, and that's, we have to address that. Actually, I did talk to Drew about that. Um, the, um, uh, so hopefully, that will be in next year. We'll probably start a poker or something in that area. What the problem is, people come in and uh uh they fill up the swales and whatever. And it stops the drainage, and that's holding in on that new house. And I did actually talk to the new owner. He said he was gonna do some work around the corner going out that way. Um, so
Yeah, that whole block.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
It's right down by the uh
The first circle we're talking about.
Just to the right of the street.
But I did talk to the owner, and he was gonna add, he's actually gonna put a new driveway in there so that you change the flow of it. If he doesn't, we'll have to address.
We may have to do the other three houses. I mean, one home, it's like four homes.
Yeah. Those are our rentals, and it's kind of tough to get get, people that rent the hu- homes to do any work because
Well, certainly it's an ice one of the ones.
Exactly. I agree.
It's gotta be a hell pass.
Yeah. You know, I agree. You know, but there'd be all the homes, so people don't put a lot of money back into it.
We should just put it on the schedule.
Okay, all right.
With the discussion on prominence, have we seen any of the specs on what kind of housing we expect to be banking?
Not this one, not yet.
Do we have any restrictions back there? I mean, can they come and put, do they have to be single family moms? Or is it both moms?
Within the three hundred lots is gonna be, and it, some of their lots are are three zone for multifamilies. Some of them fall within the year run HOA, some of them, yeah, so it's gonna be hit or miss. Um, more than likely, they'll all fall under the county building guideline, which I think is a pound and square minimum. I don't know, I don't know.
If you recall, we tried to get that increased several years ago, and the county attorney shot it down. So at this point in time, I don't think there's anything we can do. Unfortunately. That's a lot. And if you think about three hundred and eighteen months, that's in addition to what Southern Homes is doing and everybody else. And we're getting ready to get six, seven hundred homes, which is basically a twenty percent increase in the number of residents because you're in the next it's gonna be three years, two years, whatever it is.
Do you have restrictions against model homes?
Against modulars?
Yes. And we did raise the, county did let us go up a little on the uh, the way that it wasn't big amount what we wanted, but their their concern was um, if if too much work put into these we said, we had to do that, they couldn't get anybody to buy the lots. So that was their reasoning, which I guess if you're the county, it makes sense, but we did get a raise, uh, some.
Yeah, we were concerned about the anyhow issue.
We might talk about the street paving.
Paying, anything else?
No, I'm on seven.
Who's next?
I'll be uh quick. We're quick, I pay on greens. We're starting to gain since we dawn, they're getting firmer. And of course, we have to cover the street, so we try to go the best way forward with, uh, but we had a little bit of weather. But we're gaining about, um, about eight and a half, almost nine now. Once we get to ten, we'll try. I think that's gonna be a a good point. Um, as I told you to the mayor, when we get into season, we'll continue to manage time and try to not let it get too firm. So Jeff Cappas here yesterday, the DP of the Ron Biffing brand, wrote all the dog courses, we're recalling practices. Met Stan a little bit. Um, he's, he actually sees currently a special as far as cultural programs go. We talked about a future as well, what I'm gonna do in the next twelve months. And uh so in the next uh few weeks, I'm gonna try to get everybody involved in program going forward for the next twelve months. Uh, so that we have that, you know, uh, we'll come aside with that as well. A practice area was uh planted Wednesday. Landscape of all we guessed today, pretty cut down prior to planting the sprigs. I'm gonna get sawed around the bugger. I haven't yet to spread the sand out. I'm never gonna talk about having that distraction where they don't get to the curb, but they, you know, some probably finish. There's some folks on there that they don't put deep enough. All that, but hopefully, uh, the landscape in the middle of the burn will be charred. Aquatic, uh, we're gonna, then fertilize them. We're gonna start mowing some of them next week. Uh, we'll walk one of those, uh, with the swamp mower. Ape was completed uh yesterday as well, with peanuts in, the sods in, one deer. So I'll get that out next week as well. We should be able to open it for the next week or so. Uh, other than that, we put our first application of uh post emerging on the cheese uh to clean them up, get the seds off of them. And we'll continue with the pre-emerge as well. Total uh pump station got up and running uh Monday. Uh, got that going. Uh, my new assistant uh will be here, his name is Ramon Torres, and uh kind of great career between uh the Spanish provides as far as translation goes, was actually, he's worked with me for twenty-eight years as superintendent. Currently a D and R, but I think some of them are all visited. He's a, he's a great person. He's gonna be a a great asset that I have as well, so I'm happy to answer that. He's had that certified, we've been certified, so that's a license, so I'm looking forward to it. I get one stat, he actually starts uh next Monday. Um, other than that, we're gonna deal with weeds. I talked about the one up, the shrubs immediately. I know, but there was an issue there. My idea is to put some uh posca bombs in there that are gonna be fit planted with uh practice. And of course, I know that we should be here on the sixth.
I did experience an improvement in the greens October, especially.
Thank you. We're gonna get it, Ken. I promise you that.
You know what I noticed that needs to be addressed? Most of the car when you get off the car, I thought the machine was like, there's a big, we need to be kind of be and that was like big gap and it's kind of
I I, listen, when I get the uh trailer, if you're all interested, I'll be at it. So I promise that. I'm gonna fix all the transitions. We gotta shake them down, uh, we'll fix them. You know, Dan and I talked about, I got this box, so we wanted to add some additional pass. I want to go into three, get the dogs and water and stuff. I haven't forgotten about you, Dan. I'm definitely gonna get, I've got a lot of pockets going on. So that's on your plan? Uh, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Did you find out if we did the uh retool that irrigation pump?
Retool.
Rebuild.
Rebuild. Uh, that that is there right now. I'll get you a price on that. Um, again, it's gonna be eleven thousand dollars. How did you rebuild it? It's thirteen thousand dollars uh by the way. You can only rewind us things about twice. Um, and it didn't make any sense to get a extra motor right now. We had it set on the pallet for a year and it was working on it, so I just figured that approach. It would have been, no, sir. I mean, I'll get a price on it if it's under. We'll we'll do it. It'd be nice to have it back though. But I'm not gonna, in thirteen thousand dollars, I'm gonna destroy that two thousand dollars.
Love that one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, just to follow up on what we discussed earlier with membership tickets, uh since they are approved, those are ready to go. We're getting those out, you know, first of all, next week, hopefully, Monday or Tuesday. Uh, as Jenny, I'll go to, uh, we do have our big Sartoma two man tournament, which starts tomorrow. Uh, it's a, it is a Saturday, Sunday tournament. Uh, we actually have a practice round that starts today, so you'll probably see several guys out playing probably from about this point in the day, later on in the day. So it's gonna be a very busy weekend for everybody here in public, so uh, we're gonna like it long, so.
What's the purpose of this?
It's the Sartoma two man tournament.
What was last week?
Uh, two weekends ago was the Firemen's Tournament.
Was there a
Last one again was the
Yeah, that's right. It, that is the Sartoma Junior Tour.
We had one of the Sartoma.
So the Sartoma, uh So the certuma, uh, I believe it's a private company, but they, they, they sponsored, I guess if you will, the, the junior tour. Uh, but they also have, they have their, it, it's a fundraiser for, for that, is, is the certuma two man, so it's just the same company sponsoring two different things.
I know, but I had, I just let you know why I'm bringing that up, because I wasn't here, but I have, somebody said, we have. Complaining, they didn't understand why we had Saturday, Sunday, certuma event, while we play a two or three day certuma event next week.
It's, it's two different entities, i- it's just that it's the same corporate sponsor, it is two total separate entities.
Do we get any money?
Absolutely. Both once you get in, this is what you get. We get a lot of like this, we can, absolutely, I had the numbers at, at the last meeting, I didn't break them today, but I can, for, I can definitely have this for you. It is, it's, it's very, very good, absolutely.
Okay, and the other comment that this gentleman said was apparently, I guess it's apparently the kids last week. The kids were walking around with lots of the parents or their carts following, and they set up the twelve carts and following groups. So I said, but, and we just let people take carts.
Right, well, we, we, we rent, the more carts they have, they, they, there's a fee from that, so every time, yeah.
We're not controlling the amount of carts that go out in the group.
And we, we control that much money we make, I mean, we charge.
Well, that's.
Thirteen dollar money, we charge thirteen dollars a cart for the parents to come in. Right, so, I, I mean, I need to, if you wanna ask parents to pair up with, I mean, I don't know you, you don't know me, and this. They, I don't think you'd get people to do that, I mean.
We tried to do that for the reference, you know, what I'm up there?
I just said that our best way to parent, try to bring some southward playing, and the parents won't put the car, and I, I should tell you, I put them in my car.
Right.
It's the same deal, and it's the one.
Absolutely, and, and some parents have two kids out there, so they gotta run to this one and that one, it, it's, I know it's a little bit of a zoo, but, um, it's good to support that age group and. Uh, I mean, the club does make a, a little bit of money off the junior, but I, I think it's, it's good to support them.
Okay, one of these questions, it's kind of personal, did you change your, your mailing list? I used to get emails from you guys, I was like.
I can look into that, Ray, are you talking about the member, you're the member mailing list?
Talking about your home, my home. Would you get anything about the newsletter, and I guess there was one sent out on the newsletter? There was one sent out on, uh, this Andy sent one out about white lights or something like that.
Yeah, so.
I don't, I don't, I don't care, I'm just saying, I.
I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to go through and, um. Reactivate you sometimes by accident, you unsubscribe on those, do you like, is, is where we, we'll get you right back on that.
Well, I appreciate that. Hopefully you do, do it this week.
Well, usually, I, it's, it's.
I guess you gotta, the state, we got.
I need to, again, mine's a consistent thing, so, I don't care.
You guys can't, how does this happen?
Basically, they, they are unsub, they're unsubscribing, so when they, when they, they basically say you don't wanna receive these emails anymore, so they can go back and say you're doing. That's, that's how, I mean, that's how it is, I mean, that happens from time to time. And, and, and I'll, I'll make sure, and, and I'll, I'll investigate these for sure to make sure that is the case, then I'll, I'll follow that up with these, that's what I've been told. Or it could, yeah, or it could potentially go to spam. Potentially, it could be a lot, I, I, you're observing.
Uh, what, what are, can we show?
I'm in the show today, just a couple of days for me, we had some, uh, boy promotion, which was in the newsletters, Emily Nowitzki, the new utility supervisor for billing. Uh, so she performed billing this past cycle, her first, uh, go around, we're training her for the next two or three months. Uh, so you'll see some new bases in CSR position, which is the one she transferred out of. Uh, we're also gonna be hiring someone to try and assist with the new construction that we, once again, we know we're gonna forecast coming some weeks, some weeks. Uh, developers come in and start pulling more permits, so we're gonna hire a part-time staff member in the office to help with payments and do the stretch files. Um, so you'll see some new bases there. Utility buildings, we did hire two new technicians to rock, we screened all the leaders in the district. Uh, our goals have, everything is caught up in the next two months, we're charging half this month, and then half next month. Uh, so that's about two thousand liters, right a month. Meter Sis should have us a recommendation, or at least a draft proposal on new meter install, new meter replacement. So we have a scheduled meeting late next week to discuss, uh, their recommendations and kind of the next step going forward. Our planners, hopefully have an agenda item or a resolution brought up by end of September. In one direction or another, you're to support one of their recommendations, or to go out to RP if that's what they recommend, so. Hopefully by the end of September, we'll have their path of where we're going and how we're gonna try and tackle this. Basically, they, they just kind of smoke these dates, right, they provide, they, they, so they, they, they create a super work, what kind of system for this environment, which work best as far as the meter itself, the AMI, mutation. Um, all the logistics of it, they've gone out and got three unsolicited bids, they don't know who the. Sign is, so they don't know, it's gonna be something like, they got three anonymous bids from three vendors, and they're gonna bring back those three proposals for us to review and say. Here's the best, here's the second best, this third best, here's the prices, do you guys want to solicit a piggyback contract, go with these recommendations? If you feel none worthy, then we'll have to go out to RP after that. So they're supposed to send us a draft this afternoon by, by the end of today. So that's kind of where we're at right now, no other RPs are pending, um. Why are you gonna have to touch base with the irrigation projects by next one we got, as of right now, there's only R P lots, major projects.
Yeah, should we not be doing the R P on the, uh? Year one?
Sure, we're working on that, we're working on West Coast turf, uh, to design, to plan, to lay out, give us a, a materials takeoff. So we can either buy materials out, outright and store it for us.
Have you looked at that plan that you studied, that I gave you? Alton, that Alton did three years.
Yeah, so West Coast is, uh, contracting with Alton to work together to get that design ready, and then.
That was a detailed plan by all.
Right, so we were supposed to buy that from Alton, he was gonna charge us, I think it was seventy-five hundred or eighty-five hundred dollars for us to contract with Alton. West Coast is now gonna absorb that cost, they're just gonna include it in their, in their proposal sheet.
But we're talking about, what do you, when do we have to start that now again, what? You said you need five months, right?
Yes, forty-five months, and, uh, right now, we got the drawings, I got them back last week, so. I'm gonna meet with Andrew Johnson next week. Uh, and then, as soon as we get it, then he's gonna make a, a, a bid. But again, I think that it would be wise to look at, you know, the cost of, uh, prices of the products next year. So I'm basically, if they, uh, put a chance where we can see what it is, uh, this year, not right about time, it's not just what they say about the station.
I li- I like to make the recommendation that the. Estimated end date for this project?
So we're hoping to be able to, when the season starts. We're hoping to have all the recommendations from West Coast and contractors either awarded and signed by the December. In order for them to mobilize and be on site by May or so, we'll put that in the contract, but I think we never should, everyone.
Start, with, with us being done. Not our co-ops, then. That way it'll be up.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Are you done? Okay, is, uh, area open to try and talk?
Well, apparently that's not working.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's it.
General counsel.
Okay, so in the last meeting, we got the decision in Castro, I might have to ask for review that, uh, firstly, it's, it's, it was a split decision, reversed in part and affirmed in part. The good news is that the affirmed, the part that was affirmed was very beneficial to the, the district in my opinion. Uh, the part that's reversed is gonna create a bit of a issue with a current foreclosure that we have going on, but Mr. Lucchini is working on putting together a potential mediation, hopefully resolve. All of our, uh, issues regarding that at the same time. So I can give you more information, information on that as I have it. Uh, fifty-eight oh one, Brannada property, uh, has, does not have a valid permit, I contacted, uh, code enforcement. Officially filed a complaint, uh, they have my information, so they'll be contacting me once we know what's going on, that, that's, through the county. So hopefully the county will take some action about, uh, getting that situation ratified.
What, what kind of options are there, since they don't have this permit?
Well, I think ultimately, they could, they could, they could clear the property and charge it down. Correct, take it down and, 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 and take the property, so, um, we'll find out what, they'll, basically what's gonna happen is they're gonna go out and do an inspection of the property and make an interpretation on whether or not it's hazardous. Uh, is my understanding, and so, uh, hopefully, you know, as I said, they have my information, hopefully they'll be contacting me, I'm a person on that. Um, we, I have worked with the body holder, uh, regarding the, uh, two hundred and fifty plus properties that they've identified that they're wanting to go forward with on foreclosure. I'm gonna be starting, starting next week, working with Chrissy to get a, uh, a demand, uh, a demand letter out to all of them, along with a, uh, a, a statutory, or I mean, a special warrant to be allowing them to. Turn the property over to the body holder, and, uh, so hopefully we'll get a lot of response from that and not have to perform, perform two hundred and fifty plus foreclosures. Uh, depending on how that pans out, we may have to, there's, there's, could be some significant, significant foreclosure costs that we have to deal with.
Um, that's phase five bonds, that he's talking about.
Correct. Um, gas tax meeting, we have scheduled for September ninth, eleven, Mr. Rotelling, Mr. Stiegel and I will be meeting with, uh, district team with our county staff. And the county attorney to go over that issue.
Um, can we get a number yet from the county? I haven't given the number yet.
I asked Tanya yesterday and she said she did not have one, I don't know, but.
Sorry, take number reverse.
The number of, uh. The dollars, the dollars in, in consideration, what is the gas tax dollar and how much of it is shared with the, with this?
You better get us the numbers so we can decide from this work, still.
Now, what, what I was informed and what I have done, like David said, we have set up a meeting for September ninth. And I know with, once again, COVID has struck the county, listen. We're not making control about COVID, we have people filling in for other people, and it's put us behind like it has many other people. I wish none of us were in this situation, but that's true, but I understand, uh, Supervisor Neil was going to be on those bids. That we're going to discuss September ninth, eleven AM, gas tax, interlocal, and fire settlement issues. Anything else that y'all want to bring to the table, I know Tanya is working on those numbers. And those numbers will be shared during that meeting, so Supervisor Neil can report back to y'all. And I'd like to know, make a decision at that point and have a better understanding where those issues are at. I apologize if those numbers aren't there, but I'm gonna tell you, the county has been, right, I, 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 listen, I have no control over COVID. When we have people out. And we have, when we have people out of very important positions, okay, and I'm not talking just a few people right now, I'm talking a number of people that are out right now. To try to keep the county running, we have to prioritize issues, and I'm not saying this isn't a priority, because I know it has been for this board. But we are trying to do the best that we can do with this matter and get you the information as quickly as we can, so she is working on those numbers. On what that projected gas tax revenue would be. If Florida statute allows us to share that gas tax revenue with you, that's one of the things, I'm sure that David. And Dan, and whoever else, if y'all want to bring to the table, Supervisor Neil, bring as many as you want, we have a big conference room.
We can, we got everyone.
We have one, as you probably would have noticed that, and when, we will be there, but, uh, certainly, you know, it is my goal, like the rest of y'all here. To vet these issues out and figure out which direction that we're going to go, I mean. I have, my job as your commissioner certainly is to align the right people to put them together to vet these issues out. I don't have a magic wand as one commissioner to say, start writing checks to something like for gas lines, it doesn't work that way. So, I mean, I will always do the best I can to align the right people, but unfortunately, with this COVID issue right now, the way it is. The county has got some, we're strained right now on resources right now, we're hoping, we've been told by our local healthcare professionals, that this is supposed to peak within the next week or two. And, uh, hopefully it does and work there with the, on the downside of that, but we've got some major issues right now, COVID related with the county, trying to do things the best that we can, um. And certainly, you know, well, up here too, uh, but it because of the texting back and forth with staff, you had a question about the closing of the lots, okay? Um, I can tell you, it looks like a lot of those lots, they have up until October fifteenth to close. And as you can imagine, promising those, they're going to wait to close until after October first, because they don't wanna pay the assessment. Whether they may be prorated or not, and how that works out, but they don't wanna pay that for only about thirty days. So when you're buying trainer lots, just like any of us were, we waited till October, after October first. Uh, I, I'm pretty much sure that that is what's going to happen, and we are just like these folks here. We wanna get them out of our inventory, we want them on our tax rule, you want them on your tax rule, and we are moving as quickly as we can. But when the bidding process ended, and they are, were awarded the sale of those lots. They have it to lock over fifteen to close, and as you can imagine, many of them, well, there are a few that are actually trickling in that weren't the developers, what have you, that actually have. But on most part, I think what you're concerned with, it's going to be unprofitable for us if they're gonna close.
Thank you. Anybody?
The only other thing that I've got is, uh, there is one, there, we do have a new lawsuit that were, as part of the, the. We, as you guys probably know, we have two, two bonds, there's the phase five bond, which was the first bond, and then we have the fifth third bond, which is a secondary bond. The fifth third bond has some irregularities with it, because that happened during the two thousand eight, when the bubble, real estate bubble burst. And, uh, it's the phase five bond holders' belief that the fifth third bond is now unenforceable. Because it, it was, the, the bond was not properly completed, so they have filed a lawsuit, uh, to make that determination. Uh, we have, the district has been named as a party, because we're, we're as a party that's servicing it. And fifth third bank has been named, because they're the, the holder of that, that debt, so. In my opinion, this is, is a good thing, because it's going to resolve this issue hopefully sooner or later. Mr. Lucchini's been notified of, of the, uh, lawsuit we've sent over the documentation, so that's just now started. And we'll find out what kind of response we get from fifth third, but then, you know, if we're, in, in a perfect world, that, that, uh, that, that, that may be a race for us. So I'll give you more information on that, that's, that's all I've got, unless there's questions.
Thank you, David. You have a mandatory reports?
I believe we inadvertently left Commissioner, oh, if you, do you have any other remarks before I go? Just have a couple of things, um, as Mike said, we are working on the drainage, pretty much in the whole part of unit sixteen. As that develops, it's going to get to be more and more important that we have that straightened out. Seems the, the worst part of it is the part we're working on right now, which is Pebble Beach and the curve where it comes off San Bruno. That is an extremely low area that you probably wouldn't be able to develop today, the way it was done forty years ago, but. Um, it's hard to go back and establish. What should have been done, could have been done, or would have been done at this point in time, all we can do is deal with it. Um, I think the, the, uh, plan that Paulston has drawn, that now will work, um. However, I don't think it's gonna be the end of it all, it'll take care of the curve in those areas around there, but there's a further, Pebble Beach, we may have to cross that street again and go from. East to west and then. Put additional drainage out, that'll be relatively inexpensive. The reason that this was so expensive was it was nine hundred, I think, nine hundred feet of ditch cleaning that went from the. Retention area that was built several years ago on year run number nine to. Get the water further west, um, but it wasn't done deep enough to really drain that whole area, so. Um, at this point in time, we're pretty much, I'd say at least fifty percent finished, and they should be able to get the rest of it done. Next week, I would think, I had a problem, but I'm guessing that's the case. Um, but I think that's not all of it, uh, that's just part of it, but I think that's most of it. You think you agree?
Yeah, that's pretty much, yeah, I mean. Yeah, that's pretty much. Yeah, I mean, we had to do it. It was so wet back there. It's, you know, so. And I'm glad we finally addressed the line since then. Perhaps it's a long time. But I also want to bring up one other thing on. By Dan, we cut it um with the COVID. Uh security been actually called down to the first circle by the shares to help out with traffic. Because the the traffic first thing in the morning is backing up around the first circle. So. It's just hitting me everywhere. So, you know, like, you know, like we're saying, uh you know, you just gotta understand our contractors got it. I've got guys in that workforce that, you know, both, you know, that don't feel good. So you just have to bear with us. We get to where we have to be.
I think the reward today, eight hundred kids.
Right, exactly. Just, no. No, these kids, so.
Well, there we go. Got a call Wednesday. I think it was Wednesday today's, yeah, Wednesday. Um saying you have to come pick up your baby because somebody, somebody, some baby in that group has tested positive. No, no, no excuses, no time, no nothing. Come get the baby and don't worry about it two weeks.
Yeah, for twelve to fourteen days.
You know, that's it's crazy. And we'll just have to deal with it. As you all know, we have tetra pipe in the front part of Sunlight. We are also addressing that to try to get some grant money. To take care of that. Um that's all income driven. Depending on if you're low income here and you can get grant money to take care of that. We're trying, we're looking at that, see if we can actually get some um as a bond marketing. So. Worst case scenario, they say, no, we'll have to deal with it ourselves. Um best case scenario, we may not have an expense. We just have to manage it. So. We'll see where we go. That'll be a while, but we're we have started the process. But definitely, we've got a lot of things going on right now. I sent you a copy of the Human Resources Survey from Cody and Associates. Earlier this week. We will be bringing your recommendations back, probably the next meeting, certainly by the end of September, but. What you didn't know today is that the amount that we budgeted is according to them sufficient to do what we need to do for this year. So if you look at four or five years down the road, the compression from this minimum wage increase is pretty significant to us. Um and we're just gonna have to figure out how to deal with it going forward. But as far as this year, we're okay. Again, there's some recommendations that they made that were. With people out, it's hard to sit down and figure out what we actually should bring back to you, but we will get it done. David mentioned the phase five bond. If you think about the numbers that we're talking about, the county sold five hundred and sixty lots. Providence Home says they're gonna have three hundred of them built up. Two years. Do you believe they can do that? I'm telling them, you know. But in addition, you still got Southern Homes that's building. They have at least eleven fifty, I think, unless they haven't started on. So that's six hundred. Just heard him, he's getting ready to foreclose on two hundred and forty in phase five. Their intention is to put those in a big one, but sell them to develop. So we're talking eight hundred and fifty homes that could be built at Sunlake in the next. Another three years, four years. As Omar said, we need to staff up at least one person just to be able to handle the new.
Makes sense.
The new stuff that's coming. Because, you know, we have paperwork that's gotta be done, that's those accounts that before that can be. Brought to fruition. Ultimately, it's a great thing. We'll get much more, I didn't even include Mr. Horton's development. Um that is.
It's a great thing.
That's a good thing, yes. Getting there might not be, might be a bit painful, but get ultimately it's. Just so you know, there's a lot going on right now. We could have another thousand coming through the next five years.
Does that mean we should be accelerating our examination into a new sewer system?
Um. Yes, uh depending on. We're still depending on Florida Rural Water. The good news is that uh. As we told you earlier, Chris Schumaker accepted our offer, so we had to get that resolved. His his intention is to start October the first. He has a relationship already with Florida Rural Water. Um I call them and they're nice to be, but I think they know more. They know him a lot more. So I think he can probably get something done more than we can um. But that's all ultimately um dependent on getting that assessment back.
Do you? I have a question. Somebody asked me this. Do we still have the land for the stop wars?
I don't think so.
I know someone, because originally it was.
Originally, it was three or four, yeah. Um but we've we've done a lot of the. Um conservation easements and some others.
But I I just.
No, I don't think so. Um.
There there was discussion with Mr. Hornick about possibly putting nine holes in there, but.
Yeah, I I think he's let that one go.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what we have.
As long as we don't have to build this. Talking just a second about the job description. I I agree with Cliff Wood. The most important thing you can do is have the right people in place um. A- and when you get that done and get everything organized and people going the way it should, and I can probably avoid a more guy than I am. For the short term, it's sort of, we need to get, we just got too many things going on right now. Um. We talked a little bit about the meters this project. That should be back to us. We sent today an email for us to review. And we need to move on that as quickly as we can. We have hired two part-time people. Um temporaries that are going around reading the meters so that we don't wind up having to continue to. Estimate. I mean, it's been going on for months and I have people that are. Behind, I have people that are ahead. You know, we're just trying to address it as we can. Someone has an issue. We specifically send somebody up and read their move so that they are up to date. But I want everybody up to date. Ultimately, I'm hoping when you get the two people we've got, that we should be able to read half of them every month. So we're only estimating one month. Uh at a time. And that'll get everybody a lot closer to where we need to be. But the ultimate resolution is the whole meat project. Um. Think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Other than that, I just wanted to mention that uh Chris. Um Schumaker is is very much into water. And I think he's been very helpful to you already, having the end.
Yes, yes.
Um so some some grants available so we don't have to put out so much money at first. Uh is one of the things he's done. So I think we're seeing that we're probably getting the right person at the right time. At least for our water issues and sewer issues, so. Okay, unfinished business.
None.
New business.
None.
Community reports.
None of those.
Okay, public comment. You can probably even up here twelve times. What's your name?
I'll just come back uh for one minute of the job description for the general manager. Number one, I am there as prepared to the strategic plan. The point I was trying to make earlier. This should be outcome based or outcome driven. And it's your. Where to develop a strategic plan. It's up to you guys to decide what the outcomes that plans uh you would like to see. What would you like to see come out of the development of a new strategic plan? That's your job. Our general manager is more in the role of a chief operating officer than the chief executive officer. You guys perform the role of the chief executive officer. What would be your purpose, purpose section? So uh those things that. That requires us to talk about the garden strategy, long-term strategies. Looking at. So what do you want the outcome to be on some of these items? Just one, how much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Wow.
And you got about one and a half left. He's watching. I look at him.
Okay, uh. Mostly, you know, I developed a proposal that would. Have as an objective to get the county put together a marketing program through the tourist development council to market golf. Uh to uh. It's got up north where most of our members and residents come. Uh. I never got that proposal uh even even seriously entertained by Casey Hart, who was a partner. Be for the tourist development council. So I had no opportunity to present that to the tourist council. Uh the Citrus Golf Trail uh. I met with them and we put together a uh much less ambitious uh program. That involves uh a building on on what uh. Uh in on the lakes does in terms of finding people to that field, finding uh people who organize golf from South Park and. Bringing them here on the FAMCA and giving them to bring the roots out here. Uh that's just that's just lacking a tag. You know, it's already being done successfully. Fill that field generates about three hundred thousand dollars worth of nutrients from the industry in the county. Uh it was, I think, generally agreeable. Uh but uh. Unfortunately, uh we. Casey essentially voices the wealth of that presentation with the first above the council and basically made it easier to go. So you can't depend on the county doing anything to help us sell rounds of golf for it. So. Eventually, perhaps have people become settled. So uh. As as Dan pointed out, there's a possibility of a thousand. We've almost been built in the next couple of years. Cool. Okay, thanks. Don't worry about it. So. If we have a thousand homes, potentially show for the next few years. Should you guys be thinking about uh trying to attract wealthers to those homes? We have got to have a lot more golf homes if we're ever going to get our golf operation to be. Uh attractive in terms of of scale. And uh so and I only think a couple of stats of that, but we've never ever. Been born to get a professional person involved in putting a marketing program together. To have hired somebody who thought it was a great idea to spend seventy thousand dollars on a gold horse was an exercise in terror. So that's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you.
I believe in that, sir.
And on judgment, I has to link any thought I carry into the recycle things. My mind will remind you that using a key. Uh that need to influence board acting by our representative. I think something should be studied on this. The other thing that I guess is uh the uh, there's a uh, I see some uh. Uh political signs still in the yards. Uh they thought the uh. Election was over nine months. I understand that we're not supposed to have these signs. The signs are supposed to be moved after the election. It's all I can, thank you.
Thank you.
More answer. Um I, Pat, I think the signs you're talking about are actually up by the by the homes, by the interest rubbers and stuff. Pat?
Yes.
What you're saying is uh Pat, that the signs can go in people's yards for, if they want to keep it here all the time, but. I think Mike's saying, if they're on the. On the right away, they got to take them down.
But I mean, I've seen quite a few, not quite a few, but I've seen them there, you know, in the shrubs by the front door. I didn't vote for this, I didn't vote for that. Don't blame me. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, yes, basically. There's a curb sign right across the street.
Well, whatever, yeah. But I mean, I mean, I mean, that's in their own yard. You can't tell them they can't put that down. You know, as long as it's not in the right way, like like I just told us.
And tell me, Mike, if it is, don't don't take it down.
That one, that one I love.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
We saw it through the paint on the. Street, the proximity. Uh drivers, so then, and you were signing after someone comments were speeding. Um that's helpful a bit. And you said, possibly we're gonna do it again with the traffic signal. Are you gonna do that, you?
If you want, we'll do it. I mean, yeah, I mean, like you just said, they slowed down. Um. We can put it out there again and and uh for a week and test it again. I mean, it's just a tough area for a speed bump, you know. Uh you know, you voted not to put a speed bump. Um and there's not a lot of room for a speed bump, to be honest with you. We can put signs, we, I mean, unless we put a chair there or something, but uh I mean, we can put it back out there. Yeah, we can back, yeah, we'll do that Monday morning.
It would be, it would be good to have a measurement.
Yeah.
Four and a half for the stuff we've made.
Okay, yeah. All right, yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, discussion to and from the board.
Are we open on the, Dan, on unit twelve? We're better. Let's go.
Mr. Hornick has been away, so I'm assuming so. He has the contract assigned by both of us. So I don't know of any negative.
Anybody else, Dan?
I've got a couple of comments. Um one was I'm trying to address the question that one of our. Public comments was was, I actually like that we weren't doing the curbside recycling anymore because I don't think it worked from a standpoint of. Having come from California and how we recycle there. But are we going to bring the bins back? We used to have bins in the uh lot right off.
We we would like that, but that's dependent on the county. Um so we can talk to Commissioner Kerewak and. Issue our own desire.
Yeah.
We were, we were talking about that before you went to the curbside recycling. We had bins here at Sunlight that were used with a lot of frequency. We would like to have that again, I guess, is what I'm hearing.
Sure.
Do we have a place to burn?
They used to be out.
Yeah, but that's, is that the acceptable place?
When they usually.
I think they were behind there.
Yeah.
A little bit different what will happen this time with the drop-off points or before, like if, you know, service will behind the mall. The the drop-off points now will be fenced.
Yeah, I'd say that.
They'll be open only certain hours because the problem you have with those drop-off points also, if they're not fenced and and somebody's there. You run into the same issue. You get people putting the wrong things and contaminated recycling. Plus, if the bins get full, they start setting stuff outside the bins or storms come up, starts blowing everything everywhere.
Exactly. And that's exactly what happened here. We were always going over there cleaning, cleaning, cleaning up. You know, they overfill them, they just throw them on the side. They were throwing everything in the world in there.
Okay, so that that has been the biggest issue of recycling. Good in Highlands County, better than fifty percent of what we pick up curbside. Is contaminated.
Yeah, it's kind of had a down to talk about, ask you about the recycling, but. When I read the paper that you've already got three and they were going to be fenced in, that's why I didn't. and they were going to be fenced in, that's why I didn't think that we would put it up here in our parking lot because it's kind of be fenced in. But I I think it'd be good for the community, but it's just fine in some places.
Sure. I mean, if we're looking at locations, I mean, we're talking about different locations, you know, Lake Plaza, Seaburn, Amal Park, minimum of three, upper tops of five, certainly, I know that staff will certainly entertain any suggestions to look at a local work best. I mean, we understand that there's people still want to be able to recycle or required to have a recycling component in the county. That doesn't have to be curbside recycling. That's why we're stopping that. And I can tell you the big misnumber, recycling is a feel good thing for a lot of people, right? But the the reality of recycling right now, China stopped buying mixed recycling about three years ago. I mean, stopped. And there is no market for recyclable material right now. And I can, there's a Florida trend article out there, I'd be glad to send any of you the link to it, which explains this in detail. We've all county which had a recycling operation, a separate recycling, bailed up cardboard at the cost of eighty dollars per tons to find out that they had no buyer until it degraded to a point that it ended up going to landfill. So, you know, that is a problem. I've always stated that I am for any recycling, that the end result has a positive environmental impact. And simply, this does not, not only in Highlands County, but throughout the state of Florida and many other places in the nation. Recycling is just broken right now with our relationship with China and what have you. They were the biggest buyer of recycled goods. They don't buy or they went from buying millions of dollars a year out of Florida to buying, the last time they bought, I believe, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, they spent twenty two thousand dollars, the entire state. So it's a tough decision, but we're gonna, and this will be an evolving process of the recycling drop off locations that they will be manned ten to fifteen hours a week, and certainly we'll get information out of the public.
Hey, I have a question, the green cans at the wall hat?
Yes, sir.
The guy that picked up the garbage, the blue can, did she pick up the green ones at the same time?
Yes.
So there's no difference anymore, just?
No, so, you know, that's been one of the problems too, you know, everybody has a blue can and a green can, of course, a blue can a few months earlier. I don't know, but there's two in our household and I can say our blue can would last us much longer than every week. But we went from a county that was getting two pickups a week to one pickup a week. When we were two pickups a week, there was two guys at home on the back of the garbage truck driving down the road. They jumped off there and they were lifting your cans and throwing them, dumping them in the back. As you can imagine, in today's world, number one, we're trying to find help. You can't find anybody wants to do that. Number two, the workforce pump issues for that type of work is pretty much impossible to obtain anymore. So we have good automated trucks that have the closet pick it up. So all both your blue can and your green can are garbage cans now. You can, if you don't need to put out your green can, don't put out your green can. We're gonna look at some folks, I'd say, I don't need my green can anymore because I don't need more capacity than I have my blue can and I don't want it in my garage. And certainly wouldn't look at whether those can need to be picked up or what have you, what needs to be done with those. So it's kind of an evolving process. It's not where the county wanted to go, but this has been an ongoing issue. And I can tell you, I could bring pictures, put up on that slide show of our transfer station out of the landfill of what is coming off those recycling trucks. And you would just absolutely shake your head. So it's been an issue. We're picking it up at your curbside until recently, going to the landfill, dumping it at a transfer station. It comes off of that garbage truck, gets reloaded on the semi, goes all the way to Miami-Dade County, has to be dumped off the semi. The guy comes out with a hard hat, a vest and a clipboard, inspected, says it's rejected, has to be reloaded back on a semi and shipped to a landfill landfill six hours north of Miami-Dade County, Osceola County, to be dumped in the landfill. And there's nobody in this room that can tell me that's recycling or causing an impact. It's just not working. I would love for it all to work perfectly, but it simply does not here in county and many other places. So we were forced to make this adjustment. And we've also, part of the new agreement that we just entered into with Waste Connections is the service issues. We have tripled their fines on service issues, administrative fines, and we have reduced their response time to complaints from forty eight hours to twenty four hours. They have brought new management team in, they're bringing new equipment in, and it has been improving. And we are on them every single day. They have to report to the county on a weekly basis about complaints for receipt and how they were resolved. And so we're not going to stand for this service that we've been getting anymore. And not out of their defense, but they have been leading monthly because of this recycling question possibly. So, you know, hopefully then we'll change in the future, but that's a wrap.
I I called Waste Connections yesterday, I think it was yesterday, and I said, can I use the green can for yard waste? Absolutely not. You can't use it for anything but yard.
And we are exploring, because I can tell you, your waste lane is not very convenient in this county. You have to no more than six feet in length, has to be tied in bundles that don't weigh more than, I think, forty or fifty pounds per bundle. Okay? So we're looking at some things for a claw truck like you see in other locations because we actually have households in this county that instead of paying for a landscaper to come in and do tree trimming like they should be doing, that they are literally cutting a forest in their backyard and piling up a six foot high wall, eighty feet wide in front of their property. And they expect that the county and should be picking that up. So we've got code enforcement issues on that end. Yeah, so but we're looking at the that the that the horticultural waste debris pickup and try to make that a little bit more convenient moving forward. But right now it's still the six foot bundle, you know, length and and bundled together. So I will work.
It would it would probably be very helpful to us. We could get rid of those green cans. And one of the big problems we have in code enforcement is people don't have a garage where they can put it.
Yeah.
And so we not only have one, now we have two.
And they leave them out.
Yeah, well, I can say that amazing, being not only a commissioner of the citizen, because I have a problem with the neighbor across the street. But the first thing I looked at every day was their garbage cans sitting right out by the road. And they walk by them every day and they have wheels on them that you can grab with one hand when you go to your mailbox and bring it back up into your garage or beside your house. But unfortunately, people, that's the world we live in today and we're gonna have to deal with those one by one. But I will, I would like to make myself aware and see about the green cans. If people no longer wish to have those, then see about having those picked up because that is an issue we're talking about.
The other part of confusion and the change is that under the old rules, everything in the blue can has to be bagged, everything green, not bagged. If we put stuff in the green, not bagged, what's the problem?
So bags are where the bags are the big problem in recycling because bags get all wrapped up in conveyors. That's why we have shopping bags from Walmart, Publix. They have a separate location for those bags and they go to a separate type of recycle facility. Bags are the biggest problem in the recycling world because it shuts the whole process down. You get helped, they have to go in there with knives and cut it out of the conveyors and the gears and what have you. So, yeah, they did not want the bags and recycling material, they wanted all that loose. But of course, people, once their blue cans aren't filled in, they just threw their garbage in the green can also. So you could have seventy, eighty percent of people in your neighborhood following the rules and that twenty or thirty percent that really didn't care. They said, you're you're not gonna find me, how are you gonna find me? Believe it, we've had a number of suggestions. People say, put an extra person in the truck and check every can. You know, we've had a process, you know, that they could never get done with their route every day. We have done public campaigns, we have knocked on doors in problem areas, only to be called, get off of my property. Okay, I will put in my can what I want to put in there. It's just a problem. Now, unfortunately, you know, yeah, we can do recycling, we could toward, we could, we went from one seventy three to two hundred and ten dollars. Okay, I'm here to tell you that not one more penny went to Waste Connections for that increase. That increase, we are we are faced with expanding our landfill, the next cell with the next year and a half to two years, that expansion is a twelve million dollar expansion to expand the next cell of the landfill. We have been putting away money year after year. We've got better than ten million dollars in that fund right now. But that extra needed is to complete this because if not, we're gonna be behind the wall in expansion of landfill and tasks like other counties. You know that Miami-Dade County does not have any landfills. All their garbage gets trucked out on a daily basis and goes out, which will be your P D landfill. So and we will not accept any outside garbage in our landfill. We need space for ourselves in the future.
Ken, thank you very much. So are we in a year?
Yeah, I have one other, and that was an old item that we've I haven't heard any update on when we got the new census, which is helping. We have talked about level their mics and I don't know what the status of the level their mics are. Level their mics, so we don't have to lean into the microphone for the ear.
I wasn't involved in in the process with the microphones, but um, from when I spoke to Tanya last, it was just something that they decided that these microphones were sufficient enough. So.
I believe I remember a conversation where it was going to be like fifteen hundred dollars a microphone for us. And I thought, and we said we could work with these. Maybe not, maybe, I don't remember when that was.
Yeah.
I don't remember it, it was one of those talking about.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't involved in the process, I I just know that it was going on.
I can look, I don't know. Yeah, look anyway. Can I go back to the recycle bins? Are we gonna do it? I think it's a good idea if we decide to do them or not.
I think it's up to them.
Is it up, who's, if we want recycle bins here, will we just tell you what? Well, let's decide.
Can we find out where we can put them first? We don't want them back where we where we have it. It was obviously a mess. It was obviously a mess. You can put them on a tangent, you know? Put them on. We have a lot of that, yes, on on form, but we got it in a place where where it it doesn't look the mess. You're driving up Sun Lake Boulevard.
Fence around it, it should look in front of the open for certain hours. Yeah, I mean, this is not this.
All right, as long as we find a place to put it. A better place.
How many choices do you think we've got? Seriously, I mean.
I'm serious.
You got one parking lot. You got, excuse me, two parking lots. You can do this one, or you can do one by the uh, by the club house.
You don't have to put it here, we can put it down by the sewer plant. As long as we're gonna make, you know, already enclosed it. I think we should look into where we like to do that side.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, yeah, and, you know, we're gonna have the Department of Engineering when we have our meeting, and they take care of solid waste. We can actually bring that on the discussion when we meet on the ninth, see what we're looking at, what have you. But see, Waste Connections is responsible for staffing and locations that was in our agreement. We have those roll dumpster that you speak of. Okay, we're going to provide the dumpsters, they are going to repaint them and get them all better looking. We were about here at the expense of putting in the fencing, but after that, it's their responsibility to man them. They won't be able to complain about contaminated recycling because they're gonna stack them when you bring in recycling. They're gonna say, yeah, we can take that, that, but that okay, and they put it in the proper bin, and off they go. But there will be no more, they're, they will have no more howl or anything when it comes to contaminated recycling in this program.
Right.
But certainly, we could talk about whether.
Right, because in the past, we would just put them there and people bring their own. I mean, I actually found people in the dumpsters taking stuff out, a woman.
Yeah, no, you cannot leave them, you cannot leave them open, unattended these days.
Right.
You just have a disaster mess.
Why don't you call the committee, go out and find the property for us to get back to listen to the market, let us know where we put our damn guns.
I would do that. I would do that.
And you're the chair.
All right, that's funny, that's fine, I'll find a spot.
We we can, we can look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, I was just informed, Kelly apparently was part of the discussion about the microphones. And if you get the ones you're talking about, that they apparently make a lot of noise when they touch your skin, then you get a lot of feedback and they weren't sure that it would work. They talked to the microphone people, the.
That's it.
I can, I'll I'll check into it, but that's what she said, that's the reason why.
Okay, yeah, because the last time we were getting, and that's I haven't heard anything since.
That that was, that was BD before they.
Anything else? Uh, we're gonna adjourn for about five minutes before the workshop. Okay, well, wait just a minute. You're you're ready, are you, right? You're bad. That's how it talks, right? Okay, Susan. Okay.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Oops, I'll start it off, I just to just to clarify from last meeting, there's only a few minor changes. We give a little two hundred thousand dollars on the assessment. So last meeting, we had earmarked for what plus is three point six five million. Reduce that back to the original three point four three. Once again, just based on the lot sales, expect to go wherever he's coming in, with the county not going to have the code on top of you that. And another change was in the golf forms, we removed, based on last meeting, the conversation overseas was out, so we want to get to got seen, it's not a place to be in. So overall, the net loss before was two point six million, now it's something of two point seven nine five, so right at two point eight million. There's a total net off coming from the bird, so there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars showing on the last budget for this budget, just based on the assessments. Other than that, so it's been pretty much discussed, this is our fourth meeting. September tenth, we'll do a tentative adoption, so it should be pretty much final for September tenth, that'll be a public hearing for residents to come in and capture the last feedback. And then September twenty seventh, I believe, is the final. So we still have two more budget meetings to finalize this upcoming year's fiscal fiscal budget.
Mike, refresh my memory, why why did the equipment replacements this year in the capital go down from one ninety to whatever place to one seventy two?
So that was the equipment that we decided is to fire. We were gonna do a four year lease, it's twenty six thousand five hundred dollars for four years.
So what pieces of the question with with plus this twenty six thousand dollars is?
It was like eighteen.
It was two two thousand something, what?
Yeah. About two thousand dollars a month.
Right. It was twenty seven, I want to say twenty seven, like twenty six, twenty seven. You get down to twenty six thousand, that's what it is. All right. I mean, I do have, I don't have any piece of mine.
Just in general.
I still think that the landscaping number, which is on page sixteen of of twenty five thousand, I've maintained in Southern Lakes, I still don't believe that's enough. It's not valid, it's a, it's a district. Twenty five thousand, I I gotta believe the Boston money internet upkeep the grounds around Southern Lake probably. I I don't have a number to say, but we spent thirty one this year, which still doesn't look up to, I believe, the standards that we'd like to see that, so I just think it's not enough.
Once again, we added, was fifteen thousand dollars of the original, was especially, one to the twenty five.
Yeah, so we spent thirty one this year, and the place still does not look.
No, and out of that thirty, one that was in the year, fifty. No, and out of that thirty, one that was in the year, fifteen thousand was right outside this, this building, that's all we did, so. Just this one project ate up half of that one thousand, so.
Well, it doesn't bother anybody else, but the bothers me, I don't think it's enough.
Well, we can see here, if it doesn't, because I know this was the big project that, that we wanted done, and it looks nice.
Not only that, but they also did landscaping in the front. Um, the front entrance of Sun Lake Boulevard that the county doesn't take care of.
I know we gave a lot of extra, we didn't even warn how, but I, I'm hoping to see. Uh, Ray, that with our new mowing schedule and stuff, that I'd like to see it in work one year before.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it's twenty five for this year is good, but I think one of the charges for our new general manager. Is put together a landscaping plan, um, you know, work, work with the staff, put together a landscaping plan. That not only is, gets everything to where we want it, but puts together a maintenance program. Uh, so that we know what we're looking at, and that we can sign off on, these are the areas we think need to be addressed, and if the plan doesn't happen.
I agree, it, it looks so much better out here, uh, we still need to put some more sand down, really, but. Uh, it's good enough for now, I guess.
We, uh, I, I would note that we continue to. Use sod around the district, and when we have, you know, to get a full palette, and you have a few pieces, we put it here.
Okay, good.
So, if you really want to spend another couple of thousand dollars, you can finish it, but I think it's getting done now.
Yeah, it is, and I know it's, Dan, because I walk my daughter here, and I, I think it's working the way it is. But it, it looks so much better than what it did, I didn't, you know, Ray, Ray, I both those edges were terrible.
I disagree with Supervisor Brooks, I think you can spend as much money as you want to.
Yeah.
I just wanna be proud of all this guy.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And I'm glad to just see it work, I agree, I'm good.
A- as I'm on, and, um. I, I don't know what number's appropriate, to be honest.
Well, I'm, I'm, I, I like Neil's idea, let Chris come up with a plan that he can present to us.
And, and I think one of the other things we can look at with, with Chris and Indigo. Uh, is look at where we might have some land where we can put in sod farm. So, I mean, we've, we've got a lot of land around here, sod farms have to be maintained, but they got, he might be able to maintain sod farm for us. So when we need sod, we got. Rather than have to buy it all.
Alright, you bet on that one, the next one? I can't find it, where is the, uh? The sewer, the manhole covers?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm telling you, we don't have enough money allocated for repair of manhole covers. If, if, I think the budget's two fifty, and we.
The budget is two fifty, a hundred and fifty, of which would go to the inspection.
Which gives us a hundred thousand.
In general, they're.
Repair what damage we find over four hundred, so, now, I gotta tell you.
That's another number that I couldn't tell you what it's gotta be, that's, you know, you could, you could double that number. The question is. As they go into them, they can repair minimal stuff. And that should take care of that, there's also additional money to do, because I think there's another.
So there's a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars dedicated just for those studies, manholes, and sod operating, so that should be, you know, replacing, repairing.
Yeah, but that, we, how much do we spend this year? We, we had three done, and it was almost a hundred, how much was it?
We were right at a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, a hundred, but that was three.
Right.
Also, we didn't expect four hundred.
We need to, correct, so that, that inspection and the infiltration study are two separate projects. They're kind of getting tied together, but the infiltration study was only for gravity lines, which is unit two, tangled with. Go through all the actual sewer lines, find if there's any trees, roots going inside the line, causing infiltration from rain. Uh, sand coming into the plant, fix those, and then prepare, it has nothing to do with the actual list station manholes that are. You know, down in Cortez, so almost two separate projects, we're just. We need to tackle them separately, we're trying to get a vendor to come in and assess all the manholes first, tell us which ones are in worse shape, give us a price, how much we can do it for. And then adjust the.
We're not gonna have the money for it. Just because you have it in the budget, that means you're prepared to spend that without having to argue with that. Doesn't mean you have to spend it. You're not obligated to spend it because it's in the budget, so if we think, and this is just my opinion, a hundred thousand is not gonna cover the cost of repairs. Then we should put the number in that we think it is, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, but I, I don't think we're gonna budget for worst case. What we need to do is know that the positive we have in this situation is that we have reserves. So if, if we uncover emergency work that has to be done. It can come back to us, and we can take the money out of our reserves to, to take care of the emergency work. The bigger issue here is defining the problem so that we can plan more in the future.
And that's what we're doing.
Okay.
The, the hundred should take care of minimal, minor things. If you have ten manholes that have to get totally replaced, that's probably another couple hundred thousand dollars. It just depends, the, the worst case scenario is the one we had, the, the last one we did. Because it was A, in the back of the box, B, you couldn't get to it, C, you had. It looked like a spider's nest in there when you, when you actually dug it up, and it totally collapsed, so it can't really get worse than that.
Well, we don't have a better idea after they do this inspection, like the year after.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Budget to be done.
Yeah, but I meant for the, for the next year, we're, we're having a better idea of what we might need, right?
Correct, and you know, there's, there's repairs, and then there's repairs, there's repairs that can be put off for. Done in two years, one year, two years, three years timeframe, there's some that have to be done overnight.
Yeah, but repairs being put off gets us in trouble. We, we're looking at missing the art.
I don't think we'll put it off, if we come, if it comes up, we're, we're fixing.
The, 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 the ice point is for me that we had a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget this year. For infiltration study that didn't get done. So we just, we, we've been, to use Craig's term, we've been kicking this can down, right, for a long time. The, the, the issue for me is we need to do the infiltration study. And as a part of that, they will look at every manhole we got, and say, this, these are the minor ones you need to fix. These are the ones that need to get done, big dudes. There's, are, are there some in there that's still cost to split, to your point, yes. Should, should the number be a hundred, or two hundred, or three hundred, I don't know. I, I don't think anybody knows.
My problem is that you're old school, but, but doesn't our past experience say that it's. A hundred thousand repairs is not gonna be enough.
Probably.
A hundred thousand, if, if that's the case, then why, we're gonna spend, we know a hundred fifty, because that's harder to test. To find out how bad we are.
Correct.
So the hundred thousand has always been sufficient, the way we operate is what's reactive, not proactive, now we're going. We got new staff, we got brand utility directors trying to be proactive. And they still haven't got to the point where they can project out, we need an extra hundred, a hundred fifty yet without that assessment, so once we get that assessment. We can say, hey, we're gonna start tackling fifty of these a year, to get us back in line.
That's not the way we should think, we have to fix the problems, and we find the problems. Because this fifty year, fifty year, fifty year gets us in trouble, because we don't do it, we don't.
I, I, I agree with Rick, I, at least two more, at least two hundred thousand more for repairs. Above and beyond, isn't it?
And that's what you want, then we can do it, and it's, it's just a.
I know it's just a number, but at least it's in the budget.
I got another, let me give you another, if I may, before we decide on numbers. We've got this five million dollars. Of. That we all admit we had, came to light a couple months ago, and I believe, and, that's where we came from, you want that? And we don't have budget anywhere. So that's an issue, now, should we borrow, get funding for it, perhaps, but we have to put something in the budget. To cover that five million or something. And to go ahead and do it, so that's, that's an issue. Then, the last one. The hydrate.
Tetra.
Huh?
Tetra.
That million something, that ain't a budget here.
Well.
Because all I'm saying is, it's not that we shouldn't do, I'm saying we should put them in there.
So if, if you wish, we're looking at five million dollars in drainage projects, they tell us it's about two years. For the SRF funding, from the day we started, which was four months ago. Um, shortly after I got here, so you're talking, say, another eighteen months. And then you're talking about better than a year to actually do that project. And you then would start payments two years from there, so if you wish, we could put payments on five million dollars. Starting in four years.
Right.
If you want to do that, we can certainly do that.
Well, the reason that I wanna do it, um, the reason that I wanna do it, to quote my, the president over here. Is that we may not be here for three or four years, and we need is that this thing can be spelled out, all the supervisors. Are here, so they don't drop the ball, and they continue to do what needs to be done, this has got nothing to do with anything, this is all stuff.
We can certainly amend the budget for five million.
And this, once again, it goes back to, it's back and forth, if we know something that's gonna be four years out, and it's just a loan, it's really not a capital expenditure, I'm not gonna. Budget for two hundred thousand, I'm gonna incorporate that inside the operating budget. Which we don't plan five years out for an operating budget, we're just doing capital loans, so. We are only four months into the five million dollar discussion, we may come back and find out. We can't get the five million dollars, so we're gonna have to, once again, readjust our drainage maintenance budget, and say. We have two hundred fifty now, it needs to be five fifty, and we're just gonna incorporate that going forward next year, we're looking at it back, we're gonna do that.
Well, we need to get more money, we need to assess more money, yeah.
But let me ask a question that has to do with what we just heard from the county. Um, they're looking at a twelve million dollar expansion of the land use, uh, the, the landfill. Uh, they, they put ten million a time. Okay, how do you, how do you do that, and if we're looking at five million dollars in drainage, and it's gonna take us a while to. We get to where we're funding, and if we're looking at however many million dollars for a new sewer plant, and it's gonna take a while for us to get there. How do we start funding that now, so that we don't have to borrow as much later?
Probably do it once we get the. For water study back, it then tells us we have the opportunity to do the, the recent water sewer rates if you want to. Um, this budget doesn't contemplate any increase in water rates or sewer rates. None, so. Simple enough to say we have to change, we have to save a million dollars in the next. Three years, so we're gonna increase it two dollars, whatever, we know we have the big sewer plant probably coming, we have. Got definitively that we need to do that, but. That to me is the ace in the hole, if you will, we have the ability to, to, uh, increase our water sewer rates. And if you were gonna do a sewer plant in four years, maybe you wanna do your increase this year and start saving them. That's the way I would go.
Right, to me, it's, as I talked about before, it's whether we wanna. Build a sewer plant, pay for it, I mean. Like I said, when we were before, we had the money to pay that new sewer plant, we borrowed it all, zero percent interest.
Correct.
I mean, there is no reason to worry about building a sewer plant and us having to pay for it.
Right.
All at once.
But you could also do the drainage, and we can borrow the drainage, I mean, it's, it's not.
Yeah, it's the same as the drainage.
To Ray's point, we got the, we got the payments coming once we do the deal. But we don't budget five years out on, um, operating expenses, we only budget five years out of time. And that's the reason you're not seeing them.
And our budgets for the last two or three years have been deficit budgets, we haven't had the awareness to save. But at the same token, we want more landscaping, we want more maintenance, and we don't increase enough. To your point, so that's, we're always behind eight on that, that regardless.
Yeah, here, here's a bigger issue that. I think Mike's not here, Mr. Hurley's not here, but we haven't been maintaining. Our infrastructure the way that we should have, and it's not just back in the back unit ten. Um, if you, if you wanna take a ride down Postolion. And look at the, where the new coves were put in, you think, okay, we spent, I forget how much it was, fifty thousand dollars. I can, but if you look directly west from there, up where the water's coming out. There's a retaining pond in there that hasn't been, probably hadn't been cut in twenty years, there are trees growing, and. We simply have to get started doing them. There's nothing in this budget to contemplate doing that at all.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I, I think, you know, anticipate and put on paper. What we, what we think we have to stress, even if the numbers are wrong, we should document what you need to do. I think it's serious, I do, I, I think, because, I don't know, I'm not gonna bring in, like, you know, the next term, somebody's gonna replace me. Some of you guys may not be able to watch for years.
It, it's in the five year capital plan, I mean, it, it, that, that's where it shows up. If you just don't show the, um, monthly payments or quarterly or annual payments. It's hardly enough to do one year, less five years out, you know, and, and here's, here's part of the issue. It's just like this Cody and Associates, if you look at, I just, I said to you, it, it's only us chickens here. I, I said to you, we're okay this year, and we are, but if you look five years down the road, it, it is pretty. And the expenses that are gonna be increased just because of that fifty dollar minimum wage, I mean, it is, it's a lot of money. So ultimately, somebody's gonna wind up having to increase assessments just to cover that, much less all the summer stuff.
I mean, the AC level also is a number of properties.
Absolutely.
So that's, so that would have to be three to five hundred thousand dollars. Or you could have, you know, why does someone with also have ten thousand of revenues, to, you're about to sort of.
I have absolutely, I have absolutely.
And we're, once again, we're keeping track of that, I'm seeing them, it's, I agree with you, some of this stuff should be on paper, but, for example, a tetra pipe. The tetra pipe may be a zero cost to the district, so why would I lock up the budget and tell the next board? You gotta spend a million dollars next year. You gotta spend a million dollars on tetra pipe, when they could do a million dollars of drainings, on something that I'm really uncertain about, I'd rather went to.
So he thought, he thought the same, same way he did at that.
But if there's a grant that can cover a hundred percent of that.
But you don't, you know, I'm tired of hearing about grants that are zero percent, I haven't seen anything.
Well, that's because we just got started.
I'm saying, you know, show me one, and I maybe believe.
We, we didn't even have a grant rider in twenty six months.
I, I understand, and I'm just pointing you one hundred percent, but all I'm telling you is. Y'all guaranteeing this is gonna be a hundred percent paid, this one a hundred percent paid, this one.
Come on.
We're not guaranteeing anything, we're saying.
How much money is the district gonna pay per year on loans? Only knows that number.
It's three hundred thousand dollars.
Huh?
It's three hundred thousand of all the questions, Rose, every year.
Three hundred thousand off the little pay on loans, that's on loans or roads?
Loans.
Oh, loans. Well, we're talking about borrowing all this money, so how much a year do we pay?
So if you, if you borrow a thirty million dollars, the number.
Yes, whether we can afford thirty million dollars.
So if it's twenty years, on twenty, twenty million dollars, it's four hundred thousand dollars a year, it's not a hard calculation.
That's a lot, all I'm saying is, a lot of money, if you do it the right way, you should be able to, to manage it. You gotta be open and put it on paper, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
We, I mean, we can sit down and give you. Calculations and say, if we borrow a ten million dollars in twenty years, this is what it's gonna cost you, I mean, that's simple math to do, but the question is. When do you borrow it, how much do you have to do, and would you, I can't see us. Borrowing money for a sewer plant that we wouldn't increase sewer rates enough to pay for. I mean, it's kind of a chicken or the egg, do you?
Hey, I'm just wondering, are you guys confident we can handle it with us telling, completing our paperwork?
We can put it down for you.
Once again, the utility plant loan is inside this number. I saw it. So we are accounting for what we know and what, what year we expect that to be. The logistics of the five million dollars, five million dollars, if we get five million dollars at zero percent, we're gonna do a big project. If we don't get that, maybe we're only gonna tackle two hundred thousand. We don't know how much we can accommodate with our staff and our, our contractors within that scope of work. And some of that's way in the back. It doesn't need to be a priority. Do we need to get to it? Yes. But we're gonna take care of public beach first, we're gonna take San Bruno. We haven't done that prioritization to give you a good number of, here's the plan for the next ten years to get back on track. We don't have that data yet for me to give you a number. Can I plug in a fake number in there? That doesn't do anybody any good to give you a, a, a unrealistic, just off the wall number. So when you're gonna have a number? After we get this assessment back. First, we're gonna find out if we can get the five million. If we get the five million, it's a done conversation. We'll know exactly what our payment is, and I can plug that right in. If we don't get the five million. Then our drainage posted has to go through what's top priority, present that to the board and say. Here's the areas that we have to get done in the next two or three years. Here's how we're gonna pay for this. So we're waiting major increase assessments for the next three years, X amount. And once again, those are gonna offset each other. There's gonna be no detrimental impact, more than likely, to the budget. It all kind of works in tandem as we get the information coming in.
So we're waiting to hear back on the funding for the, or the grants available for the five million.
Correct.
And we're gonna get that one.
He said, he said it would take approximately twenty four months. We've been working on it about, well, he said eighteen to twenty four. And we've been working on it about four months. It's in the process.
So we have another year and a half to go. Will we hear back whether we can get it?
I think you hear back, but actually, you hear back, yes, and then you gotta get the grant paperwork and stuff done. So you should know something, this time next year, it might guess. But this, you have to understand this, first time I've ever been through the grant process as well. Uh, Chris Schumacher does a lot more about that.
Are we ahead of everything that's coming down the road, if it takes that long to get grants?
Yeah, we're working, I mean, to first.
Before, we didn't even know. You know, at least we know now, the discussion is, it's out there. We know that we have. These submit issues that have to be worked on, and it's just taken us.
So have we done anything with the pipe pit, the type, whatever you call it?
Tetraic pipe? Uh, we, we're talking to Corbin about what we have to do to get, to see if we can get a grant. It's dependent on, uh, to get the grant is dependent on your average income in that particular area. We're a low income area, and he's doing that on, on, on geo coding.
So are we two years away on that, before they get back to us and that?
No, that, that shouldn't be short. If the answer to that is no, then we have to figure out how to get it done based on our own abilities. If you're an S R F fund, uh, loan, or we can do it through our.
Isn't there a deadline? It's the one we're supposed to get done.
With the tetraic?
I don't, not that I have.
I, I just know that, uh, this isn't the first time we've been talking about tetraic pipe. I remember when Kenny talked about it too.
Exactly.
And, but. I'm trying to remember what, what we said that we were going to do back then, and I don't remember now. But I know it was kicked around as that we're gonna be doing something because of the step or pipe. We have to get rid of this.
It's gonna take that a candle. I don't think there's a deadline.
No, there's not a deadline. You, you can actually mitigate it by crushing it in place and leaving it in the ground. I mean, what they do is, as I understand it, is lay parallel pipe. The issue is. The expense, the expenses, you gotta cross everybody's driveway. Cause it's all through, it's all wordbed, and it's all through.
If you can crush it and leave it in place, why would we have?
And that's been the discussion. We talked about peace and Elliot. Israel, when he was in charge of that apartment, wanted to do it one way. Now Joey's in there, and he would like to get it all done in one shot. So it's, once again, we've dealt with turnover, we've dealt with new management. Mike currently coming out on in December is gonna be another place, but we're gonna have moving pieces as we get new employees. In, in those positions.
Uh, we need to get a plan, and the plan is sticks with it. Just because you change personnel won't change the game plan.
And, and I think that's a plan that Chris can easily help us with. Correct, his background.
Correct. He, he has the water sewer experience, but, um, I had no idea what tetraic pipe was six months ago.
Well, let's go back to the original statement. Do we wanna put more into the main covers? What do we wanna just?
You can do that if you wanna do that. That, that's, that's.
I was thinking, it's coming down the road eventually. Well, once again, we are working behind the scenes. Even though there's only a hundred in there, we're still gonna plan on doing the assessment. We're gonna come back and say, hey, we actually need three hundred. We'll make the budget amendments. We'll have to approve it till we can get them done. It's all coming down the road. Obviously, we'd like to be proactive. If I had a number, I'd give it to you, but. Just so that it's in process, even with the number that we have now. We're still gonna proceed as if there's three hundred dollars in the budget. We're not gonna stop and say, we can't do it because of X. We're gonna come back and tell you, this is what we need, and here's why.
When does the inspection start?
It has not, because it's not in the budget. This, we're working on next year's budget. So it can't be done till October. And the second piece of that is, we're gonna do it as a sole source, or we're gonna try to go up from R and B. I say that's a sole source project. I don't know the answer to that. We gotta figure that part out. We just got one vendor that we talked to.
Again, I'm, I'm just one too, like Ray. I don't think anybody here on the board is gonna let this go. I, I, I don't mind, uh, you know, waiting to see. But I know there's nobody setting up, the supervisor's gonna let this not happen. If, you know, we need the money to get it. But I'd like to have a better idea.
We're all in agreement. I mean, really, it should have been done last year. The big, the big reason that it hasn't been done to this point is that some people wanna do it as a smoke test. And some people wanna do it as a camera test. Which way you gonna go? It changed based on personnel. Or a little water will come in, do a smoke test for you basically for nothing. But does that do everything you want done? Maybe not. Does that give you a hard burn with people who aren't here and smoke coming up through their plumbing? It's, it's kinda suits yourself pretty poorly. To me, if you do the hundred fifty thousand, you not only get a camera through every pipe you got, so if you know what you got. They also repair anything they see that's small enough in the pipes when they're in. So you not only get the problem identified, you get most of the smallest song. And they're gonna look at you, cause they gotta go in every manual. It's basically what they do. Go down the manual, shoot the camera. Basically, they're looking at the camera through each pipe. So you're gonna get an inspection of every manual here, and they're gonna come back to you and say, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, this one here, or these that. Uh, and then you're gonna know.
Do we, do, do we have to do an R and B? Or do, do you, do you identify for somebody that has this skill and ability to do that?
If, if they're the only ones who can do it, then.
Yes, that's what we're waiting on, is finding that company, cause the first company, Max, by my mental, couldn't do the full scope of work. We had them fixing manuals, but they were only lining, they weren't finding out if it was stepping, if it was structure.
And are we looking outside? You have inspired other people.
Correct. So that's.
Are, who, are we doing that?
That's what we're gonna find out with Joey. I think you guys had a meeting, not too long ago, to be skilled?
Yeah.
With the vendors.
We had, we had a meeting with one vendor. I asked Joey to see if there were others that can do it. And if so, to get them in there. So I don't know the answer to that one.
Because if, if there's other vendors, then we gotta do an R and B. And I'm saying, then let's get the R and B started. Because it seems like it takes us forever to do anything.
Well, you're dealing with, with policies and procedures that. Here's the thing, you can't do an R and B because we're not in that area. You can't do that till October.
You gotta be kidding.
Why, why couldn't we do an R and B for a project that's gonna be done next year?
We have a one fifty budget this year, so we could do it now. The, the, I guess we haven't been provided the scope of what we're gonna do. It's a smoke test, and it's a camera, then it's a max.
Okay, well, let's assume we're gonna do a camera and, and.
We just need to get a pricing, see if it comes in over fifty thousand, or it's gonna meet that limit for R and B, and then we'll just shoot it off.
What they said to us is a hundred and fifty grand.
We, we can put out an R and B, and there may only be one bidder.
We're only four and a half weeks away from.
Exactly.
That's what you're, that's, that's your desire. We can do one right away.
Done, not built until the new fiscal year, but why is that? Pretty soon it's gonna be able to be done. By the time your R and B goes back, it's next year.
Why don't you guys do that? And cause.
Absolutely. If you want R and B, that would need to be done. The issue is, how do you, where are the R and B? Do you wanna adjust the inspection? Do you want that added? Repairs to whatever they can repair as they go through. That's, that would be my suggestion. And secondly.
Okay, how are they gonna bid repairs if they don't know are there, that can?
Correct. But they can, they can look at it and then come back and tell you, or they can repair them as they go, so much per. Uh, repair basis. For example, if, if you, if they're seeing a leak in this pipe, then that's one thing. If they're seeing roots in the pipe, that's another. You have to, they, in essence, have a, looks like a chainsaw that you can cut them out. But then you have to go back in and put a chemical in it to kill the roots, or they'll just grow right back. So there's new, there's, there's nuances that we need to make sure we get into the R and B.
Okay, well, I, I would say that we would want the R and B to be able to, uh, have a bid. What it's gonna cost to do the inspection, and what it would cost for. Simple repairs that they can do in process.
So much problem.
And go from there. Uh, but, you know, obviously, if you big stuff, we're happy to do it.
I think we can do, we can do that.
Theoretically, you should have all our R and Bs ready to go. All of them, ready to go October, mid-year. For the fiscal, there's no reason to wait to get it.
Well, last year we asked them. Last year we asked them.
Last year you cancelled them all. Whether we're gonna do that again, I mean, if we do an R and B, now we're just wasting our money if you're gonna do that.
We're not gonna do that this year.
I'll, I'll work with Joey this, this next week and see. Maybe there's a way we can get provision in our contract where they charge us an hourly rate ongoing. We can just track it and bring it to board for approval, and we'll keep you guys progress. Hey, we spent ten grand this last month, or whatever. Instead of making it one big compilation, we need to just get started and get them rolling with the amount of budget that we have right now. Get them started versus dragging this out based on that.
They, they said the whole inspection project would take six to eight weeks. But that's, you know, you have one, six to eight weeks to get it done. You have a mobilization to get them here, and then they will be running through this thing. Um, part of their issue is, they would rather do it when it's not. Seated, but they don't want anyone flowing there than they have to. When they're down there, they have to shut that down for whatever period of time they are. I mean, it's, it's not just a simple.
Well, let's, let's do that, and we won't forget Ray's proposal, because, you know, we have an idea that makes more sense to do it if we have an idea. But, uh, so we don't forget that, but just get, just get that done. Okay, is that great?
That, that's basically saying we don't wanna do it till May of next year.
Probably, unless they can do something.
Yeah, I don't, don't.
Before, between now and. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to them and see. We, we will, but you know, here's the thing, are you willing to do it with one vendor, or do you wanna go for an R and B? Cause that's gonna take ninety days to get back. Then you're talking first of the year anyway, to start of the day. I mean, it's. There's some late time.
If there's another person out there, probably, right? And another vendor.
Kind of there's a piggyback contract, or they've done, you know, once again, they got a national program, so we'll look at.
Whether they have that or not.
We can ask the question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but a piggyback, great.
I just think you, you've got the idea that we'd like to get it started. Okay, anything else?
Well, you have to understand that, until today, I didn't know whether you wanna do a smoke test or whether you wanna do.
We're not, we're not blaming anybody here. We're just, I think you can see some frustrated people.
Let me, let me add to that. Not only frustrated, but also grateful that we're finally looking at these things.
The other thing I was heard of, I was just closing. I was gonna say, because everything's gonna be pushed down the road, which is terrible. We can take the swimming pool and move it up. I'm just, I'm serious.
You, you want a bigger home, put money in, I got it.
I would move, because when you move it up, you're only moving it up because it goes to the summer. So if you move it up one year, you can build two years down the road. I'm just throwing it out.
I, I hear you, but I wanna hear, I think the other project is before I spend a million dollars on a.
And we know you won't give up, so.
Seriously, we need to, Chris, I'm ready, cause if we can do this out.
Yeah. I'll work with Joey this, uh, early next week, find out, get in contact with them, see what options, and I'll shoot the board. Probably on an email, ask them what the direction is and have it next meeting, so we can get that one.
Well, but, but this, how will we tell everybody that we changed the rates, that they can get everything right?
That'll be part of.
And we, we should tell them, yeah.
Correct. That'll be part of the, the communication, I guess, first of October.
So we will look one there?
Correct, yes. Let's just pick a wall and rack it.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, that's right.
What's that?
The, uh.
Fitness center.
No. No, we didn't, we, we just, we couldn't do that, because if you put another hundred people in there, you'd have to put people in here. There's not a room.
I thought we were gonna do it, there'd have a signage.
I don't think so.
We got, we have a sign out there that says the max capacity. We talked about that last time we did it.
We didn't convert that. We're still gonna drive for that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's really the issue is the capacity. I, I don't, you can't have more than, what, ten big ones or something?
Okay, anything else? Okay, maybe you're.